Generally, an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plats, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or development services department staff for details on council hearings. Applicants will be given 10 minutes to present their requests. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicants are then allowed five minutes for a rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present. Is there a motion to approve the November 4 meeting minutes? Okay, Dan. Everyone voting to approve the minutes, please raise your right hand. And any abstentions? And Greg, were you voting?
Yes, I approve.
Thank you. Okay, now, I'll go through the consent public hearing items. I'll read each one individually, and then I'll ask if there's anyone who wants to have it pulled from the agenda and discussed here this evening. If we don't pull it, and the commissioners agree, it's just automatically approved, and we move on to the next item. The first item is a city-initiated request for the following for properties generally located along East 21st Street and Tetchner Street, between Guthrie Avenue to the north and Interstate 235 to the south. A, a determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM Creating Our Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan. B, amend the Plan DSM Plan to revise the future land use designation from industrial to low-density residential. And C, is to rezone property from I-1 Industrial District to N-3A Neighborhood District. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have this item pulled from consent and discussed this evening? Okay?
If I could, I just want to make, you're opposed to the item?
No, I have questions.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Item one will be pulled. Item number two is a city-initiated request for the following properties generally located in the area bounded by East University Avenue to the north, Interstate 235 to the east and south, and East 15th Street to the west, except for parcels fronting East University Avenue. A is a determination as to whether requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. B, amend the Plan DSM Plan to revise the future land use designation from business park use to low-density residential. C, rezone the property from EX Mixed Use District to NX1 Neighborhood Mix District. Anyone wish to have this item pulled and discussed this evening?
Ben, you have a question?
You have a question on that one as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And item number three is a request from Nap Homes regarding property located at 4402 Douglas Avenue. A, to a determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. And B, rezone the property from MX1 Mixed Use District to MX3 Mixed Use District to allow development of a restaurant with a drive-through use. Is there anyone here who wishes to have this item pulled from consent and discussed this evening? Anyone on the commission? Okay, that item will remain on consent. And item number four is a request from ARD Properties for review and approval of a major preliminary plat, Bauer Heights Plat 4, for property in the vicinity of 5591 Northeast 36th Court in Delaware Township, within the two-mile distance for extraterritorial review of subdivision plats by the City of Des Moines, to allow subdivision of the existing property to create two residential lots and one outlot. Is there anyone here who wishes to have this item pulled from consent and heard?
Okay, there's a question.
Okay, so, all that's remaining on consent, then, is item number three. So commissioners, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Okay, everyone in favor, please raise your right hand. And Greg, how do you vote?
I approve.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, we'll just start with the consent. Okay, we'll go back to item number one, which I've read, and it's Suresh Oshie is presenting. Thank you.
And if I could, Chair and Commissioners, before I turn it over for the presentation, I think that we'll probably be pretty brief on these, on items one and two, and that way we can get to the audience members' questions. There's been a lot of work, and a lot of folks here, they're here for these two items, so we'll just be on point.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission, Suresh Chakrabarti, planning staff with the City of Des Moines. The item before you is a city-initiated rezoning for an area generally located along East 21st Street and Tetchner Street, between Guthrie Avenue to the north and Interstate 235 to the south. The subject area is currently zoned I-1 Industrial District, which does not allow for new residential uses. The area primarily contains one-household residential uses that are considered to be legal non-conforming use within the I-1 District. The city is proposing to rezone this area to N-3 Neighborhood District to better accommodate the existing residential character of the neighborhood. And here's a map showing the adjacent land use and zoning. As you can see, to the north, it's, the uses include commercial and industrial businesses. To the south, it's P-1, and includes cemetery and Interstate 235 right away. To the east is P-2, I-1, N-3A. Uses include public, industrial, and one-household residential uses east of Interstate 235. And to the west, it's I-1. Uses include industrial businesses along Delaware Avenue. So the context of this rezoning is that the area in question was, when the current, when the 2019 zoning map was adopted, the area was rezoned from R-161 Family Low Density Residential District to I-1 Industrial District. And since the new zoning had to be in conformance with Land use, some comprehensive land use plan, which designates this area as industrial, the city is proposing to rezone this area to N-3A Neighborhood District, which describes the district as intended to preserve the scale and character of the residential neighborhoods predominantly developed in the 1950s, 60s, and 70s. So staff recommends approval of the request to rezone the property from I-1 Industrial District to N-3A Neighborhood District to better accommodate the existing residential character of the area. And staff conducted neighborhood outreach with this proposal as well, which was well attended. We received several comment cards that you can see up here. Most of them, about 15, most of them were in support. I believe there's a couple that were not in support, but most of the responses that we got were in favor of this. With that, if you have any questions about this item, I'll be happy to take them at this time.
Are there any questions from the commission? And the opposition cards were, what sort of comments that were negative?
As you can see right here, the point that they're making here is that this area is largely industrial in nature, and that was kind of one of the reasons why the land use plan determined that this area should largely be residential, the surrounding uses are. And so they're saying that it should be kept industrial because the land use is...
And I think if you go to the response map, that's probably slide, maybe 16 or 15?
Yeah.
There we go.
Whoops.
15.
Yep.
I think this is probably a pretty, you know, telling of the responses. So those that were in the area to be rezoned were favorable, and the one that we did get concerned from was up there in that corner, which is, you know, not subject to rezoning, but it's an industrial, commercial property that abuts the residential.
Thank you. If there are no...
Does the X mean anything, or is that just a mark?
I believe that's just a mark.
That's just a mark, yeah.
Sorry.
I have one final, sorry. Are there, do we know if there's any, like, we know all these are houses, there aren't any businesses that are operating in there that will be impacted by this change?
That's correct. There's this area, the area within that orange boundary is all single-family houses with some vacant lots scattered in there. We've had, how this started, we actually, the commission saw a rezoning request several months ago for, up there at the north end, where somebody wanted to build a garage after storm damage. And so that kind of was a starting point of reevaluating this whole area. We're not, I'm not aware of any...
I believe the area that's being rezoned, that is mostly in residential in nature, but as you look around it, within the 200-feet buffer around, there are some industrial uses around, adjacent to it, but right where we are looking at rezoning, it's largely residential.
Are there any residential areas adjacent to it that are not included in it, like any residential lots?
I don't believe so. I, if you, some of this is not in the orange, I mean, that shows, looks like a lot, but that's really, was impacted by 235. If you want to, if we went to the aerial that was at the beginning, it's probably slide two or three. I think that would give the commission a stronger sense of what's there. There you go. And maybe zoom in. So the area, like I said, right now is a mix of some vacant lots, but a lot of smaller ranches from, like, the 50s or so, 50s and 60s. I guess the quality of the map there is, we're losing that, but on Delaware, you have a mixture of items as far as development, but you can see on the east edge there that that's largely, that's part of 235.
So if someone, if someone was running, like, a homebrew operation that we don't know about, and they came to us later and said, "Oh, man, I was in here, I was operating correctly, and I got rezoned differently," how would we treat that? Would we allow that use to exist? I'm not saying it's there, I'm just curious what the procedure would be.
Yeah.
If we got it wrong, we didn't see something was in there.
No, that's a great question. If by chance there happened to be a commercial use somewhere in there, and we determined down the road that they'd been established legally, they would have legal non-conforming rights to continue to operate. If they wanted to expand, you know, or make improvements, they would need to seek a rezoning to be able to expand that non-conforming use. But I, I don't know if you've been in this area, I'm pretty competent, competent, I'm competent, I'm pretty competent as well, that this is, you know, a residential area, a lot of houses. I can visualize the neighborhood in my mind, I've been down it enough.
So if there are no more questions, then the city is presenting, correct?
We had an audience...
Do you have somebody else to present for the city?
No, we're done as staff, so...
So now, if there are speakers in support of this item, please come forward and state your name and sign in, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Witty, and I'm president, oh, I live at 2501 Morton Avenue in Des Moines here. And I am president of Fairmont Park Neighborhood Association. Of course, Fairmont Park is in favor of this rezoning. The neighborhood was rezoned to industrial without any notice, any notice to these residents. Or to Fairmont Park, or even to our city council representative, which she, we had a meeting last Tuesday, Fairmont Park, and that's, because it was asked her, "Well, why did you let this happen?" She said, "We didn't know." So, if it hadn't been for the deratio in 2020, I got a call from, from one of the residents that live on 21st Street. Her name is Morgan Mauer, and I believe that's the only house that is, is actually residential in that whole area. And she, she had damage to her garage and, and to her house and so forth. So she went and got a contractor. They went, got a, got a building permit, and they started tearing the stuff down. And all of a sudden, the city comes, says, "You gotta cease. You can't do this in your, in your house. You cannot do any improvements." That's when she called me, and I said, "I have no idea." So, there is 100-plus houses, I should have counted them before I came, but it was getting dark, so I know there's 100 for sure. I would say closer to 140 to 50 houses in this area. And this is a neighborhood. This is not an industrial area. The industrial area is west, the industrial park. I'm asking it tonight to please vote to get this back to residential, so these, so these families can enjoy life again. I mean, ever since we found out about this, I have a lot of calls, I try to calm them down, you know, things are gonna, things are gonna work out, I'm pretty sure. And, and one other thing is, when I came in here, I was talking to Jason and so forth, not all the residents got a card. We were out, well, I should say, some of the residents were out handing out flyers, telling people about this meeting, sending the cards in, so forth, and a lot of them said, "We don't, we didn't receive a card," and asked if we had a card that we could give them to send in. So, you know, it might have been a heck of a lot more than 15 for. The people I've talked to, there wasn't anybody opposed to, excuse me, the rezoning of that, of that property. You know, at one time, they, they had some people say, "Well, the city will buy us out." No, the city's not going to buy you out. What's going to happen is, when your house gets so dilapidated, you can't sell it for anything, they'll take it, and then they'll, they'll make it industrial. Please don't let this happen to this, these are homes, these are families. Please vote to change this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in support of this item?
Hi, I am Debra, and I live on 2112 East 21st Street. We are a residential neighborhood. There are approximately 136 homes, which 85% approximately are owner-occupied. I have lived there for 30 years, and I have watched our street improve over this time. It was very upsetting to hear that we had been changed to industrial, which would not allow us to improve our homes, rebuild anything on that property, or even build new items like garages or anything that we needed to do. Also, hearing that banks would not loan money for anyone that wanted to sell their homes as well. Since then, I know, I think I've talked to Jason before, but I know that you guys have made a few changes now that have allowed us to do a few things, and I thank you for that. I'm here tonight asking for you to take this before the city council and change our neighborhood back to residential. Again, thank you for the changes that you've done since we discovered this. Please help us get this changed back so we can enjoy our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wish to speak in support of this item? If not, this is the time for anyone who is in opposition to this item to come forward and speak. Okay, if we have no one in opposition, any final comments from the city? Anything you want to address?
No, just happy to answer any questions the commission might have.
Any questions for staff at this point? If not at this time, we'll close the public hearing and have deliberation by the commission. Okay. Is there any further discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. And Greg, how do you vote?
Excuse me, the motion to move staff?
Okay, thank you. We have one commissioner on telephone, that's why I'm talking to him. So the motion has passed unanimously. Okay, so we're ready now for item number two on the agenda.
And before, number two, I think we can probably be fairly quick, because it's very similar, maybe if we just want to go to the map and show the commission where we're at. So this is, just, this is a little bit south and west of the area that we just discussed. Similar exercise here, we evaluated this as staff after having some interest in some housing development there. The commission, not too long ago, saw a rezoning request on Buchanan, and so we supported that to allow a new house to be built. So this proposal would rezone this area to, I believe it was, NX1. With that, I would, if the commission has questions for staff, we're happy to answer them, otherwise, we could open it to public comment. Maybe go to the response map, there we go, looks like we had one card in support.
Any questions for staff at this time, commissioners? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and ask if there's anybody in the audience in support of this item, and if you are, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes. If there's no one's support, is anyone in opposition to this item to come forward?
Or if you have questions, too, if you're not sure, but just have a question.
Denise Olson, 912 East 17th Court. I have some questions about the rezoning. My neighbors, some of my neighbors are Hispanic descent and believe that their houses are going to be torn down. How would you answer to that question?
They're, we are just proposing to change the zoning to a district that allows residential uses to, to be developed or expanded by right without having to rezone. So there's no, there's no property acquisition, there's no any plans for redevelopment, really, it's, right now, their houses and uses are what we call legal non-conforming. Means they can exist, but they can't really, there's limitations on how they can expand. This rezoning would allow them, would get rid of those limitations, it'd be an allowed right, or used by right. So it gives them more rights, more flexibility with their property, so it's actually to their benefit.
And is that in regard to home improvements and building structures and things like that?
Yeah, so additions, renovations, garages.
Okay, how would it affect someone who wanted to run a small business from their home in that area?
You know, there, if you see along, you can see that we left the more commercial-type zoning along University, but, so that area within the focus area, if somebody wanted to do a business there, they would have to seek a rezoning. They could do a home occupation where it's secondary to your house, and there's a conditional use process that exists for certain types of uses in a residential district, but certainly just, it does limit the ability to do commercial development in this area that you see on the map.
Okay, I'm assuming that that would include such things as, like, selling garden produce or, I don't know, urban farming type thing or something like that?
As a property owner, I mean, that's, I'm thinking more like a traditional commercial development and uses. I mean, you, there's certain, you know, a lot of things you can do as a home occupation, there's a lot of gardening that you can do, and community gardens that you can do. EX, the current zoning district that's there today, doesn't, isn't granting any more rights that are specific to those types of uses than the neighborhood use.
So you're wanting to rezone it as residential only with limited commercial, is that correct?
Well, there's uses that are allowed as home occupations that you can do in a residential setting. You still, the, the property still has to be primarily used as somebody's personal residence, but, you know, you can do, you know, I'm trying to think of a great example, you know, like, traditionally, maybe, you know, if you have, like, a home office, if you're, you know, an accountant or something on those lines, or other kind of small-scale, maybe hair barbershop kind of, you know, thing, where it's really still a house, you have the ability to do those in the residential setting. But yeah, I mean, if the thought was, is you, somebody wanted to do, like, a traditional storefront or industrial, you know, like...
Those would be limited, you're saying?
Yeah, that's going to be more challenging.
Okay, because there are existing businesses in that neighborhood, such as an auto shop...
But aren't they on University?
Yeah, that particular one is on a corner, yeah, of University.
So they would be, their zoning is not changing. I don't know if you can see it, the map up on the screen, it's, all the properties that are fronting University are staying zoned EX.
So it's everything behind that up to, or...
Yeah.
South to Interstate, basically?
Yeah, it's all the residential, I mean, I think there's, there's a couple churches sprinkled in there.
Correct, yes.
But it's largely either vacant lots or currently used residentially as somebody's house.
Okay, and this would not affect homeowners renting homes to, you know, non-owners?
No, zoning doesn't, that's, the city has a rental code that's separate from zoning for that process, but zoning in itself doesn't mandate ownership, it's just about the use.
Okay, then I have some answers for my neighbors, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Those are great questions, thank you.
Is there anyone else who has questions or has a neutral position that would like to come forward? If not, commissioners, do you have any questions of staff? Not, we'll close the public hearing and have commissioners to deliberate?
I'll move staff. Move staff.
Okay, Dan, it's move staff. Any further discussion?
I do want to raise one thing, since this is one thing that I guess I've talked to staff about a little bit, I think there is, the issue of distributed farming and neighborhood farming, this, this does raise an interesting point here, which isn't exactly, you know, on this, but I'm hoping we can discuss the ability to do urban farming in distributed manner, like, for example, 134372 does not provide the type of commercial urban distributed agriculture that could be useful, especially in these types of neighborhoods or others throughout our entire city. I don't know, I know it isn't a part of this, but I'm hoping we can either put on a discussion or whatever we need to do to get started on, because obviously, 134371, now that we've actually had... actually had the food security task force is over and the recommendations have come back, obviously there's been some recommended changes to 134 371, 373 seems to be not touched, but 372 has a major, major gap in our opportunity to actually do the type of urban farming that would be useful here and in other neighborhoods that are similar. So I'm hoping, is there something we can do to get that in planning or discussion?
The, yeah, the task force report just came out, it does have some things in it. We haven't, you know, we're going to, that's an item that's on our list of things that we're working on as far as code amendments. I don't have a timeline yet. I want to sit down with Jeremy, the staff person that led that, and try to understand kind of his thoughts on it and how we might structure stuff, but it's certainly something that we're going to be looking at.
And we could have that maybe at a 5:30 presentation at some point here?
Yes, I mean, it certainly could be discussed that way, but it may also be something where we, our first lack at it is a council workshop to get some general guidance from them and direct, you know, some general direction, and then we might come with some thoughts for you guys. I don't know, I mean, the report just came out, so I haven't fully laid out a process yet for it.
Let us be happy to send you some stuff on 134, 372, because I think there is a big, big piece that that task force missed, but I think would be very, very useful, especially for some of the scenarios that she's raising as well.
Okay, great, well, we'll come back to this item and we'll remember that one for the future, yeah. So, any other discussion on the motion to approve staff? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And Greg, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion is approved. So now we're ready for item number three, and Frank is presenting, I believe.
Madam Chair.
Oh, no.
I'll present that.
Oh, excuse me, that was the one that wasn't pulled, sorry, Sarochee.
It's okay. Sarochee Chakravarti, planning staff at the, with the city of Des Moines. So the item before you is a review and approval of a preliminary plat to allow subdivision of an existing property to create two residential lots and an outlot. The property is actually in Delaware Township in unincorporated Polk County. The reason the city is reviewing this is because it is within the two-mile radius for extraterritorial review of subdivision plats. The developer is seeking to subdivide the property into two parcels for residential development and two outlot in the, in the unincorporated Polk County area. So the subject property here contains a mix of open space, forested areas, water features, a pond and a wetland area. A portion of the property is also designated as part of the 100-year floodplain. The site is about 13.4 acres, and generally the adjacent land use and zoning is low density and medium density residential, estate residential district, Polk County's estate residential district, south, east and west of the, of the property. Staff is recommending approval. We do have some plat maps here, and I'm not going to go into any of this unless you have any, any specific questions, but I'll just go through the recommendations. Staff is recommending approval of the requested preliminary plat, subject to a few conditions. The first condition is compliance with all comments of the administrative review by the Permit and Development Center, provision of a note on the plat document that all future development is subject to Article 7, which includes topics such as natural resource protection, floodplains, woodlands and wetlands of the Polk County zoning code. Staff also recommends that the city council waive its right to review the final plat of Bauer Heights, plat four, as allowed by Iowa Code Section 354.82. So with that, if you have any questions, I will be happy to take them at this time. We did receive some concerns, we got an email in opposition to this, this particular proposal. We also received a couple phone calls from adjacent neighbors that expressed some concerns with drainage and floodplain issues. We did circulate this item to our engineering staff and they reviewed that in detail, and they do not have any concerns with that, so we did make sure that they had a chance to look through it.
Any questions from the commission?
Was there any more specifics in their concerns in the phone calls than just that email?
Mostly the concern here is, as you know, the, a portion of the, the property is within the 100-year floodplain, and so if there is any construction, then if that could create grading issues, adjacent property owners might be impacted. So they were concerned about that, and that was mostly what they, they were, they were concerned about, which is why we had our engineering staff take a deeper look at it to make sure that that was, that was all okay.
Is the Article 7 conformance sufficient for ensuring that they will have to make sure that they aren't negatively impacted if development comes here?
Yeah, I, I believe so, and I think the other thing to just remind everybody is that this is, this plat is really under the purview of Polk County and their regulations, their zoning, that by state code, we do have the opportunity as the nearest or closest city to look at it to make sure that from a layout standpoint and plating perspective, it's not doing anything that would impede us from future growth. We don't believe that that's true, so, you know, we're supportive of the request so long as they meet Polk County's requirements. But ultimately, this is really, you know, we're supplementing Polk County's review, it's really their, their plat.
Okay, if there are no more questions from the commission, is the applicant here to present? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioner, Jason Ledden with Snyder and Associates. Our business address is 2727 Southwest Snyder Boulevard in Ankeny, here on behalf of Russ Downing, the developer of the property. To help address those concerns, the reasons for the outlots on this parcel is to outlot the 100-year floodplain so that no development can happen within that floodplain. Also, as part of Polk County's ordinance, we are required to show that there is no fill going in that 100-year floodplain, so we have complied with that with Polk County as well. So the intent here is to provide two, two single-family lots, which will sit up higher than the floodplain, and then two outlots to out, to plat off the floodplain with the street extension. I would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, if there's no questions from the commissioners, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against this request? Okay, so at this time, any further questions for staff? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, what's your preference on this?
I'll move staff.
Okay, there's a motion to approve staff. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. And Greg, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, that motion passes. We're now ready for item number five, which is a request from CFD Properties for the following regarding property located at 2300 East 14th Street, and includes a determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM, and B, to amend Plan DSM to revise the future land use designation from neighborhood mixed-use and low-medium density residential to industrial, and C, rezone the property from MX1 use, mixed-use district to I1 industrial district to allow a use that includes outdoor storage. And Frank's presenting, thank you.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. I'm Frank Dunn, Frank Dunn Young with the city planning. First, I'd like to get started with getting familiar with the site. Currently, the site is a repurposed convenience store from the past. What you'll find to the north of the property is residential, along with residential to the east. Directly to the south, you will find a MX1 zone property that is a car lot, and then that is to the south, and, sorry, previously I said to the east for the residential, actually that's to the west, and to the east it's a clinic. Currently, today what we have, I'll show a few photos. Here's the site as it exists today. Their, their intention is to maintain the laundry bubbles that exist within a majority of the building, and their hope is that by rezoning that they could repurpose this exterior area where they would have as an outdoor storage area. In this tenant bay here, they look to, to put an office, which is a use that could be palatable today, however, the outdoor storage area would not be. If you could see in this image, and I'll try to zoom in a little bit, because it shows the 25 by 40 area that they would like to use for the outdoor storage. So the requested rezoning to I1 industrial use would allow the property to be occupied by a business that involves outdoor storage. The city's ordinance only allows outdoor storage to take place in industrial district. The proposed rezoning would require the future land use map to be amended to an industrial designation, which is currently, the property is currently designated as low-density residential and low-medium density residential. Within that, it's primarily a single-family and two-family residential. The rezoning would, would go from MX1 to I1. I1 is a zoning district that typically would allow outdoor storage, and is typical for general industrial uses, warehousing, transportation terminals and the like. Staff believes that the industrial development should be focused in areas of the city that are already designated for such uses. The nearest industrial area is approximately a half mile in an industrial corridor to the east. The subject property is, is located along East 14th Street in an area that is primary, primarily residential, in character with a cluster of the commercial development that I mentioned previously. Accommodating and industrial uses could have a significant impact on the area. Should the property, should the rezoning be denied, the applicant could go to the Board of Adjustment and seek a use variance. Such a use variance wouldn't require the amendment to Plan DSM creating our tomorrow future land use plan. And so we did receive feedback from neighbors not in favor of the rezoning. We also received feedback from Union Park Neighborhood Association, and they too are not in favor, indicating the potential impacts that, that industrial designation could have to the property and to the neighborhood. And here are some of the comment cards. And the Neighborhood Association response. What questions do you have for me?
Well, if there are no questions at this time, thank you, Frank. And is the applicant present? Please come forward, and you have five minutes for your presentation.
Thank you to the commission for the opportunity to make this request. Just to echo some of Frank's comments, is the spirit of the usage is quite minimal. Where the property itself is just shy of an acre, the, the area that we would intend to use would, is roughly about 1,000 square feet. We would like to install a privacy fence around the commercial equipment that would be parked there. From a neighborhood watch perspective, there were some folks that did participate. I requested some feedback. The feedback was that they would like a business to go in there that would improve the area. My response to that was, well, we're a home improvement company. What better to put a home improvement company just in the center of this, this part of the area so we can bring up the value of all the properties? Nonetheless, I think I'd just like to echo the minimal usage of the space, and the amount of visibility will be quite minimal due to the setback. It would be the farthest west portion of the parking lot, and during the, the day, all of the equipment will not be there, they'll be out in the field doing their jobs. So this would be essentially overnight parking. That's it. Any questions?
So are you, are you really just proposing fenced-off parking spaces? Or when you say the storage, what, I'm confused as to what the business is.
Sure, it's not going to be a typical industrial storage. For example, it will only be commercial equipment that would be parked behind a fence line that we would install to cut off that 1,000 square feet, right there on the west end of the, the parking lot. That would be the positioning. The remaining of the parking lot will be available to, to customers.
What is the fencing material?
Oh.
I'm sorry?
Sorry.
No, go ahead. What is the fencing material?
Chain link fence, or if there's a, if there's another form of material that the commission would prefer, we're in the home remodeling business, we'll, we'll put a, a better product in there, if that's the request.
Dan?
Well, and I was just going to ask, could you describe the equipment a little bit? I mean, like.
Trucks, trucks and trailers. So we're talking two, two, two work trucks, work vans, cargo vans, and then we have some various trailers.
As far as the rezoning to I1, did, did you recommend this, or was, what's, what's the path that we got to this? Because it seems like if we're just talking parking, fenced parking, that doesn't seem...
Yeah, so the use as described by the, you know, by the ordinance, as you take about the, the vans, the trailers, this is a contractor's storage yard use, and that type of use isn't allowed until you get to the I1 district. And so this was the, the best, you know, that was the first opportunity, you know, like for a zoning request, or zoning, changes zoning. So although I don't know that the applicant in and of himself said, hey, I want to do I1 zoning, this was the first, the, what we could match up with his use for a zoning classification.
I guess this was the best definition or defined, the appropriate pathway.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
But I wanted to convey to the commission that the intent is, I think, much smaller. But I wanted to convey to the Commission that the intent is, I think, much smaller and the spirit is quite minimal. From a storage perspective, there is actually storage that we would use inside the building. So it has its own storage closet, if you will. So no building materials, if you will, or any equipment materials, they will not be visible. They will be stored away and locked away.
If this was a 25 by 40-foot garage, would it be different? Like if you put up a structure with doors and parked in there, I mean, is that a different request or is that still an I-1?
The contractor, I'd have to do a little search, but the outdoor storage component clearly is I-1 at the trailers. If it was all contained, I mean, he could have an office function here clearly. I'd need to dig on that to just confirm whether or not, if he had a building, if it was within the building, if that would matter. I'd need to double check. But the primary issue here is the outdoor storage of the, you know, the trailers and equipment and that, not so much the trucks, but, you know, any equipment, the trailers and stuff. And the code clearly defines that as something that needs to be in the I-1 district. And I think in Frank's presentation, you heard him reference the opportunity for a conditional, or excuse me, a use variance. You know, that's the, this sounds very minor, you know, when you think of it as like, well, you know, the use going on in the property, but at the zoning stage, we're asking ourselves a question, does this zoning make sense here? And we also have to find that zoning in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. And I can tell you, I flat out that industrial designation on the future land use map in this area makes no sense. So if you answer that question first, then it's, you can't support the rezoning even if the use seems fairly minor. And that's where, that's why staff is saying, hey, you know, he might be able to seek a use variance. They're going to have to show that there's no other financial viability for that space, that, you know, the property is not profitable without it. And I shouldn't say profitable, but has, you know, it's not a margin of profit, but there's no other use for it. But that would be the other path.
I would like to point out here to the south adjacent is a car lot. That's a used car lot and they have all kinds of equipment on their lot as well.
Equipment or the cars?
The cars. I've seen, I've seen plow trucks. I've seen a trailer on their lot.
And they may, there may be code violations there that we're just not aware of, need to be enforced on. I can't speak to that, but for a sales lot, they have, you know, they were established legally.
Also, from a visibility perspective, you know, I'm also trying to convey once again the positioning of the request and location with regards to the street there. We are trying to maintain the integrity. We maintain our grounds quite well and in the spirit of continuing that effort, that's why we have this perfect little cutout that we would utilize for this intent.
Any further questions for the applicant? If not, thank you. And will, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in support of this application? If not, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Okay. Any further questions for staff at this point from the Commission? If not, we will close the public hearing and see what Commissioners would like to do.
I'm somewhat sympathetic toward the having a new business coming in here and expanding, but I'm also more sympathetic to that this is a residential neighborhood and changing the zoning, I think is not appropriate. And I think this, the better course that the property owner should be going, seeking a variance with the Board of Adjustment is the proper right. That's my opinion on this.
Thank you. Greg, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, for a little different reason, I have similar sentiments. You know, I heard a lot about intent and spirit, but I think I also heard that the neighborhood is in opposition, neighbors are in opposition, and that should have been figured out. And so for those reasons and what I just heard, I would not be in support of the rezoning.
So I think I agree with Francis and I aggressively agree with Jason that I think that changing this to an I-1 makes no sense, but I do want to make sure that it sounds like the purpose of it is with an intent and we're talking about most accessible, highest value use. You know, equipment that's operating business, that's providing jobs and revenue behind a fence, seems like it makes a lot of sense. Is there anything that we would need to do here to enable that or is that a different application as a reason that, is that not in here? So if we move staff on saying this isn't going to get rezoned, we are supportive of that business if it is fenced in conformance with the other ordinances and it's not outside the spirit, so to speak. Is there anything else that we need to do here to support the business but not support the zoning?
No, I don't know that there's anything that the Commission needs to do specifically. I, other than, you know, do what you're charged with, which is making recommendation on whether or not it's in conformance with the land use plan. And that gives the, I mean, the applicant, I think, what to take with you is that the applicant really has two paths forward, or three, I'm not sure that he's the owner or part of the ownership group, so he may actually be able to look at a different spot. But the couple of other paths would be to see if there's another place, you know, if having the office function and the, like, the van or truck, you know, the actual vehicles that they're using driving here is important, you know, that we could probably get their use down to something that can fit in the commercial category. The other would be to try to obtain a use variance after the rezoning process. That's not guaranteed. The Commission can certainly, you know, we can share with the Board that there was discussion about it with this Commission, but ultimately that's a different group that's charged with that decision.
So the use variance has not been asked for, is that right?
Yeah, and the way, you can actually, the way the city code is set up, you have to be denied a rezoning before you can ask for a use variance. It's to keep people from doing the end runaround kind of thing.
Sorry, I didn't understand that piece. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Anyone wish to make a motion?
Make a motion, we adopt staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll vote on the motion before, which is to approve staff. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And Greg, how do you vote?
I agree.
Okay, thank you. So thank you. We're ready for item number six now, which is a request from Abu Baker Mohammed for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property located at 1121 21st Street and for further consideration of a denied type 1 design alternative to allow a total impervious area on the property that is approximately 86.3% of the total lot area, which exceeds the maximum 50% allowed for a House D building type. Anu will be presenting.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission, city staff and attendees. Anu Fritman-Hass, Senior Planner with Development Services. Strangely, this is my first in-person public hearing meeting in a couple of years. I might be a little rusty, so I appreciate your patience with my presentation today. As Madam Chair mentioned, this item is in front of you to request for a retention of existing paving at the property addressed 1121 21st Street. It is 86.3% of the lot where 50% is maximum allowed. Little context of the site, it's located at sort of that T of Drake Park Avenue and 21st Street. It's on the east side of 21st, located in Drake neighborhood and within 250 feet of Good Park neighborhood. It's zoned N5. Most of the area around the property is also zoned N5 or has a mix of NX2 or N5, 2 or 4 around. N5 zoning district allows for House type D, which is what this review was. This request was reviewed under regulations that are required under House type T. To give you a quick context on the property itself, my bad here. To give you a quick context on the property itself, it used to be a 10-unit building, built in the 1900s. Over time, it was, and take it back, it was built as a single-family house back in 1900. Over time, it was converted to 10 units in the building, which you would see probably the case for multiple houses around in this area. In 2019, the current property owner bought this property and has applied since for density reduction for the property to bring it back to single-family house. The property did stay vacant for several years. The last rental property certificate that I saw on the property was for 2009. So sometime between 2009 and 2019, the property stayed vacant for several years and it was offered on a tax sale, which is how this property through multiple changes came in possession of the current property owner. The current property owner, since applying for the density reduction, has made a lot of improvements to the property itself. One of the things that has happened since then is they did apply for slab, for a garage slab permit back in October of 2020, last year. It had come to the attention of the city staff that a garage was built on the property and that sort of kick-started this whole process. A further inspection on the site revealed that paving was poured on the side along with framing on the garage that has happened. If you see the pictometry, this is from March 2021 and this is the subject site, this is the house, and the entire rear yard pretty much has been paved. There's a driveway that's been poured along as well on the side. In March 2021, there is no garage, but as you see further down, these are pictures from Monday this week and you can see the garage that's now built, semi-built, not completely constructed, which basically brought this to the attention of city staff again. A few quick pictures here, there's a driveway that's been poured on the north side of the property, a view of the rear yard looking towards the alley. This is from the alley looking to the house and there's your garage frame that's been put together. Some more pictures, the side yard is, the only open space now on the site is a little bit on the side yard and on the front yard. The applicant has provided a narrative, I'm sorry, this is kind of hard to read, but basically, the applicant has mentioned that the family stays on a different property in the city right now, but he intends for his family to move to the site. So the additional paving in the backyard would basically be just for personal use, parking for vehicles, as well as to provide some recreation and outdoor space for the family itself. Based on, you've probably gone through the staff report, it's a total, the lot size of the lot is 9,000 square feet. A maximum 50% of paving, impervious area is allowed, which includes your building footprint as well as paving on the site. That would come to 4,500 square feet. Based on the applicant's submitted drawing as well as using some of the city's mapping, we calculated the existing paving on site to actually be 6,559 square feet. That goes to 86.3% of the lot. The reason this is in front of you is if it was 30% of the maximum allowed, staff could have reviewed this internally and provided some feedback. But because this is over that 30% threshold, it's come to you to request for a type 2 design waiver to allow for that additional paving. Staff believes that 86.3% is too much on the site. One, it would definitely raise questions on water drainage on the surrounding properties and around, and also sort of not getting too much deep into it, but sort of contributing to the heat island sort of effect and other environmental impacts of having too much paving. So staff is basically recommending denial of the requested type 2. What staff would probably be supportive of is to allow up to a type 1 allowance of pervious on it. So if you were to actually go with the staff recommendation, this applicant could still come back and request for a type 1, which would allow them 30% over the maximum impervious. They would still need to take some impervious out if you go that route. That's all I have in presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does the area covered by the, does the area covered by the garage get included in the 86%?
Yes.
If the garage area was taken out, what's the percentage?
I would have to run the calculations on that. But at this point, there's an excess of 2,059 square feet over what they are allowed, maximum allowed.
Anu, do you want to go back to maybe the aerial or that pictometry view? That might help the Commission. We may not have a number, but I think you can at least look at that and get a sense.
Is that a 20 by 20 garage?
Probably 24 by 24. Yeah, 24 by 28 garage.
24 by 28. The, we did send out notices to the neighborhood and to neighbors within 250 feet. The only thing that I've heard back was an email from the Drake neighborhood president just asking for additional information. I've sent them everything, but I haven't heard back anything more. There's a consent map. There's nobody in favor or against it at this time. The applicant is attending the meeting today, so I'm sure they'll be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you, Anu. Is the applicant present and wish to come forward, state your name and address and you have 10 minutes?
Hi, my name is Abu Bakr Mohammed. I am the owner of 1121 21st Street. As you were saying, the property, we did do the concrete, but when we spoke to Russ when we were doing the footings, he came in, he looked at the whole area when he came by. He looked at the whole area and he saw that. I mean, the only way to get into the garage would be, let me see if I can find the picture. If you can see here, I mean, the only way to get to the garage, we chose this footing so we can get into the garage this way and this way. And when Russ came in, he saw the footing and he was okay with the footings. I mean, this house has been vacant for 10 years. So we got mechanical permits, plumbing, we have all the permits for the building and we made sure to get the garage footings as well, the garage permit. And when Russ came in, he did look at it and he okayed the footings and we told him that the garage door was going to be in this area. And then also for the decks, he came in for the decks as well. So we did add support for the decks. That's where all the concrete support is. I mean, there's support here as well for the steps. That's the only reason why we put the concrete here, but other than that, I mean, we are, that's why we put the concrete there.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support?
Hi, I'm Omar Habib at 1110 22nd Street. This is my neighbor and I've overseen this remodel for the past two years. I've been watching as they've been working towards it. They've gone from, basically, this whole place has basically looked terrible. It was an eyesore and they came in and they put in a lot of work into it, made the neighborhood look a lot better there. And as far as this garage placement there, that is literally the only way you can get in from it, it's from the front or the back. And based off everything that he told me, they never had a area where they could have their kids play and stuff and they never owned a garage before too, so that's one of So that's one of the reasons why they had so much concrete and a lot of area around it. So just hearing their story was pretty compelling, which is why I came in, sent support of it. And they kind of put their whole life savings, life savings into this, basically, and to have them kind of like tear parts of it apart is pretty unfair, I think. So that's my view on it, and yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of the application?
Hi, my name is Awais Habib. I live with our neighbor over there, but it was like last years, two years ago, was like so messy, that area was in the back, so it was so many junk all over that area. So I'm glad they did like that because there was like a lot of cleaners, but not before now how it is right now. So before it was a lot of trash, all of the back, where the garages are right now, was a lot of people parking cars over there, it was like broken cars, like parking like a dumpster over there everywhere. So now it's like a very clean area, so we're glad to be doing like that. So that's the things we're so happy to be, I said, the neighborhood is clean like that. So, okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in support of the application?
If I could interrupt, Tyler, have you been able to, did you catch the name and address of the speakers? I, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to catch. Anu, could you just make, make sure people sign in, help us out for the record? The sign-in sheet for the speakers? Maybe Frank's got it? Thank you. I just want to make sure we have a clean record, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Okay. No opposition? So any questions for the staff at this point, commissioners?
Yes, my question is, how'd this get so far in the process to allow the concrete to be done?
I'll try to answer that, but I also have a quick clarification on, the applicant talked about city staff going in and being okay and knowing about this, but that's really not the case. The initial permit that was applied for last year was for slab only for the garage in October 2020. Sometime in August of this year, city staff, it came to city staff attention that a garage was built on the site. So a notice was sent to them to ask them to come in for a garage permit because they cannot build one without the permit. It was, so the, so the applicant came in and applied for the garage permit. At this point, there is a garage permit outstanding. The reason it has not, city staff went in to do a framing inspection is when they realized that pretty much most of the backyard is now paved. At this point, we have the garage permit outstanding. There are separate permits for the building remodel, which is what the electrical plumbing mechanical that were mentioned. That's for the house and that's separate, and that's waiting to be closed as well based on final inspections.
The other thing to add, if my memory is correct, when we do a footing inspection, we're actually, we're inspecting the setup, not actually, before the pour. So we're not actually coming out after the pour.
And I think the reason, as you asked, why it has come this far without coming to attention, there, at this point, there is no requirement for a paving permit if you're paving portions of your yard. So I think that's kind of one of the areas that we've identified might be something we wanted to keep an eye on. But the paving was put in place before any of the building permits were pulled for the garage, which is why it sort of slipped.
Dory?
Yeah? If we, if we support staff, what happens to the, what does the applicant have to do?
If you go with staff recommendation to deny, the applicant would still have the opportunity to come back and request a type 1 design alternative, which is what I was talking about, a 30% of what is allowed, the maximum that's allowed. So that would be, which would still, if they meet, if, based on the review and approval of that type 1, they would still need to remove 709 square foot. So there would be some paving that they would need to remove to meet that threshold.
Anu, how much, how much did you say they would need to remove? I was thinking it was closer to 2,000 square feet to get to the...
They have an excess of 2,059 right now over the 50%. We are allowed to review up to 30% over that. Like 30% of the maximum allowed can be reviewed under type 1. And that is 1350 square feet. So they could, with the type 1, they could have 4,500 plus 1350 total impervious area paving of the lot.
So if it's a 9,000 square foot lot, normally you'd get...
50% of that is 4,500. Right now, total on-site is 6,559.
So that's an ex... I mean, if you get 4,500 and then multiply that, 1 point times 1.3, so they could have 5,850. And then you subtract out, what do they have?
Right now, they have 6,559.
6,559?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's about 709.
So just a little over 700 square feet is what they would have to remove if they decide to go the type 1 route and if that is granted.
And I, and I apologize that we took everybody through the math exercise. I just wanted to make sure that we, we were being clear with the, so the applicant understood. And again, as staff, you know, we were trying to find, we are sympathetic to the applicant's situation. We think additional pavement makes sense, but we're also trying to balance this with water runoff impacts on the surrounding area. And so we're supportive of some level of relief. We just thought the 30% threshold made sense. But anyway.
The other thing that I would add to that, if the commission today decides to go with staff recommendation and the applicant then applies for a type 1, we would probably have them additional conditions under that type 1. For example, having curb around the paving so that it doesn't drain into neighbors' properties and stuff like that. So there would be a little more review and some conditions to that type 1 approval.
How much, how much water needs to be accounted for to ensure the equivalent stormwater retention abatement that would be equivalent to cutting out this amount of area? Like, if we're cutting out another 709 feet above what we have here, how much stormwater retention benefit does that provide? Is there an economically viable alternative for something to be like a cistern or something? And has that been run as an option?
I am unfortunately not an expert on that, and I would probably have to defer to engineering unless Jason has any other ideas on how we might be able to tackle it.
No, I, I don't think that we can get into specifics, but I do think that the commission, if you're going down the path of maybe trying to find, thread the needle, that certainly if you wanted to, if you're inclined to have the pavement left as is, but wanted to minimize impact, you know, maybe you could request, you know, stormwater, you know, rain barrels, you know, for their gutter system, or require their gutters to be aimed towards the paved part of their yard. I don't know if that's possible. Anu, which way does this property slope? Is it fairly flat in the back?
It's fairly flat, I would say.
I mean, obviously, it slopes...
Some towards the front.
The streets, the streets hide compared to the backyard, right?
That's the front of the...
Okay, can you go to the alley view? So it is fairly flat. It looks like it kind of comes towards you in this picture. Is that accurate, or is that just the...
I would, some of it might just be the angle of the picture, but I would say it still sort of drains a little bit or slopes a little bit towards the alley out here.
And is the pavement set back from the property lines on both sides to the north and the south? I'm trying to remember. Is there an opportunity to do plantings along the edges, I guess, is what I'm getting at?
Towards the back, I doubt it. That's the front. They're starting to saw it all.
Well, I just meant like to either side of the pavement, to the north, the south of the pavement. I didn't know if, that looks like there might be a couple feet between the fence there. So maybe in the back, there might be a little bit of space. I guess I'm just trying to give the, I, I, we're not going to be able to provide like engineered solutions, calculations tonight, but if the commission is looking for something...
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I would like to find a solution because concrete is expensive. And they're really improving the property, and that's very clear. So I'd like to find a solution, so if somebody, if we can have some help.
Well, I gotta, I don't know if the chair is agreeable, but I don't know if we could bring the applicant back up. I'm not seeing gutters on here. It would be good to know what his plan is for that and which direction he feels that the gutters might have to be aimed towards. Because I think if, if we could get most of the water moving at least off of the house towards the, the side yard, that would be a benefit. Does that sound okay?
Applicant willing to step forward again and discuss this?
Now, Anu, did you understand, I, I did, what I'm looking for is what is your plans for gutters on the house?
I mean, the, the house has been vacant for almost two years, and we put new sightings, we put new concrete. I mean, we put thousands and thousands of dollars into this house. So, I mean, we just recently spoke to somebody that was going to put the gutters in, and they were going to put a couple around the houses and around the garage. I mean, we weren't sure about the gutters yet, and we're still looking at, we're still looking for quotes.
Okay, I didn't know in those conversations that you've had, or just with the way you know how the, the roof works, if you think it's possible to get most of your downspouts aimed towards the side yard with the grass?
Yeah, I mean, when I spoke to, I believe I spoke to her over the phone, and she was talking about something about draining, and I told her that if you guys need us to add any more drains anywhere, we can, if that was, if that was the issue.
Okay.
And then with the, with Russ, when he came in, I mean, the, the whole house was, the whole property was dirt. And when we created the garage slab and we put the footings and everything, I mean, the, the logical thing would be to see how the car would get in and where we would put the concrete. And if he said, if he said to not pour that much concrete, we wouldn't have poured it. But he didn't say anything about the concrete, and the logical thing would have been to just pour it this way. And it, I mean, it looks cleaner. We made sure it was six feet, six to eight feet away from both property lines. And, I mean, the footings and everything, that's, that's what Russ okayed for the garage slab. So it is six to eight feet away. It's, it's a pretty big gap. And that's, we went with the concrete that way. I mean, that's, that's, that's the most logical way.
Is Russ a city...
Russ is a building inspector, and, I mean, I, I don't want to get into tick for tat on, I mean, I, I think there's, I mean, Russ isn't there to look at this type of stuff. He's just there to do building inspections, and he might have a conversation with you and that you might interpret as him having, but he, he's not, he's not an expert in site plan and stormwater and those kinds of standards. So I, I apologize if there's some confusion on that, but I just don't want the commission to think that Russ is trying to okay stuff that he doesn't have the authority to do.
I mean, I wouldn't say that he okayed it. I don't think he okayed anything. He just okayed the garage slab. And then the most, the logical thing would be where we would put the concrete. And if he told us, if he even asked us, where do you plan on putting the concrete? We would have told him that it's going to be this, the setup would be this way.
But to get back to my question, you're willing to work with us on the placement of your downspouts and possibly other mitigation ideas?
Yeah, I mean, if we need to add more gutters, drains, or anything, we're okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can I clarify that too? So if they, if they are putting, if they are putting drains that would go straight into the storm sewer, are we okay with that as well as far as the function, what this ordinance is designed to be?
They, they wouldn't actually be able to dump it into the sewer directly. I think maybe they talked about possibly like trench drains on the site, you know, like on the site to move the water. That'd be my assumption. Anu, is that, can you elaborate on what your discussion was on the drains? It wasn't to connect to the city's stormwater system directly. I don't believe they'd be allowed to.
No, we didn't really get into the details of that, but it was basically just limited to the applicant being open to working with how they might be able to now address water drainage from the site. So I think if we decide today that, again, going with staff recommendation, then all of these could be put as a condition in a type 1 that this applicant requests. So we could figure out more creative ways to try and minimize the impact of water drainage and how it affects the existing city system.
So what's being asked here would be, so if, if we're, if we say this isn't appropriate, the first option is they have to cut out 709, well, no. They today would theoretically need to cut out 2,059 square feet of concrete. If they go to a type 1, theoretically, they would have to cut out 709 square feet if they get the type 1 approved.
Right, which we're gonna, we'll approve it, that's not a hypothetical.
Okay, so if it's approved, so we are talking about 709 square feet, so what we're hoping to do is say, we would like to make sure that 709 square feet doesn't have to be sawed out and dug out. We're saying we would rather make sure that its rain barrels are being used, or it's other type of drainage or something else that does, because as someone who's very sympathetic, I have a house very similarly positioned, which has always been a frustration. And, you know, these are challenging, especially because the other driveways, they're all dirt. I'm not sure having dirt with multiple cars is any better than having concrete with multiple cars. And if our solution is able to be water retention, awesome. So I'm just, is...
Yeah, I, I think if the commission is interested in approving the request, I would just offer it be subject to working with staff on some other, you know, rain barrel, gutter solutions to the satisfaction of staff, planning administrator. And we'll work with them. And if you have specific things, if you really want it to be rain barrels, if you want it to be focused on gutters, you could put that in there, but we're, I'm totally comfortable working with them on a solution that tries to address what you're, you're identifying while leaving the pavement there.
I was just hoping that our basis for what the mitigation would be would be based on 709 square feet of pavement has this amount of problem for wat, you know, water dispersion.
Sure.
That we're basing it off of that threshold as opposed to saying, oh, we'll have like 28 rain barrels for, we don't know why.
Yeah.
No, six is what we need for 709 square feet? Awesome, let's do six. That's, that's the basis of my pedantic concern.
And I'm happy to work with our engineering staff to give us kind of more of a volume perspective, so we can have a basis and not just a random, I'd like this, you know, kind of thing.
I know it's a calculation, I'm sorry, I didn't know the number either today.
Beyond the, the rainwater runoff for stormwater concerns, I'm also concerned about how much drainage is going to be on the, on the neighboring properties and what that is going to look like. So doing the guttering into the yard is great. Rain barrels are really only good if you're going to use that water for something, otherwise they just overfill. So I'm not sure that that's the best solution, although it can be part of it. Ideally, something like a rain garden that could capture that water before it gets off the property. And at one time, the city had some rebates or some money that you could get for doing that work. So I think all of those are options. I mean, the rain, but also the snow, I mean, I, I've had big driveways in the past, and I just look at this and think, oh, I would not want to get the snow off of that. And where are you going to put it? And when the snow melts, where is it going to go? So those are my concerns. So, yeah, I'm very concerned about the runoff on this property.
I think a small piece of that, as I mentioned earlier, you could possibly try to address that drainage on the adjoining properties by requiring curbs around the pavement and making sure that it drains towards the alley or the street. So that, that is one way of addressing parts of it.
Let's hope we have no further questions. We could close the public hearing. And see if there's anyone who has a motion at this point.
I don't know exactly how to phrase it, but whatever Jason was saying, I would be open to, so would it be moving staff and then...
Well, you would be moving approval of the requested type 2 design alternative subject to...
Subject to working with staff on mitigation, gutters, rain barrels, et cetera, to...
To the satisfaction of the planning administrator.
To the satisfaction of the planning administrator.
Great, so we have a motion on the floor. Any... Great. So we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion about the motion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And Greg, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. So the motion is passed. Thank you. Now we're ready for item number seven, which is request from Dwayne Hill for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for the property located at 710 Maxwellton Drive and for a type two design alternative to allow waiver of required public sidewalk installation along Maxwellton Drive. And our news presenting this one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is in front of you, asking for a waiver of the required public sidewalk installation because it is on, it is classified as a priority one sidewalk gap in the city's transportation plan. Earlier in summer, the city council approved some ordinance changes where it allowed the city staff to review these sorts of requests, if it was a request for waivers on priority two or three sidewalk gaps. Because this is priority one, this is why it's come back to you for review. The subject property is located in Waters Heights neighborhood. It is an N3A zoning district and the house was reviewed under house type B. What the applicant is doing here is basically having to, wanting to expand his existing footprint on the house. That has kicked the, the size of the expansion as well as the estimated cost of construction for permit purposes on the expansion is what has triggered full site compliance for this property, thereby requiring them to put in a five-foot sidewalk along the property. Quickly running through just what they are planning to do, that's sort of the rendering of the house. They're planning to remove an existing garage on the side, on the west side of the property and build an expansion that would include additional bedrooms for the family. Again, as I mentioned, that is what sort of kicks in that threshold of 50%, over 50% threshold, which kicks in asking for full site compliance. Just a few pictures here. This is the stretch of Maxwellton Drive. If you stand by, if you're closer to Southwest 9th Street, looking east. And this house out here is your subject property just beyond this tree. As you can see, there are no sidewalks on either side of the street here. This is the stretch looking from the subject property right here, looking towards Southwest 9th. Southwest 9th is up here at the end. Southwest 9th at this point has sidewalks on both sides of the street. That's the front of the house. The applicant's contractor basically has submitted this application and narrative on his behalf and, which basically lists the reasons for requiring this waiver is that there are, the applicant states that there are no existing sidewalks on either side of the, of the property or on either side of the street for that entire block and more, on the east at least. And also the cost has been mentioned as one of the hindrances or challenges for the applicant. Basically, I think if staff feels that the location of this site, which is about barely a half a block from Southwest 9th, that's one of the criteria that sort of plays into this. And also the fact that it is classified as a priority one sidewalk is why the city staff is recommending denial of this request and wanting the applicant to put in a sidewalk on the street. That's mostly it. That's mostly what I have, unless you have questions. In the code, if you see what was approved by city council earlier this year, if it was a priority two or three, then staff could have reviewed and approved this with whatever conditions at that time would have been applicable or would have been intended or required. For a type one, city staff at this point, priority one sidewalk gaps can also look for and ask, allow that waiver if at all the applicant is open to differing that sidewalk installation, which means that you put that money into an escrow account for a future construction. But the applicant has stated that at this time, they do not have any desire to do that or put a sidewalk at all in place. We have not received any comment cards from anyone in the neighborhood. I did get a phone call from the neighbor on the west side of the property, directly west adjoining. And while he has not submitted a card or email or has come down in person to look at this, he was in favor of the applicant's request to waive the sidewalk just because there are no existing sidewalks. And both him as well as the applicant have also stated that this, if they do put the sidewalk in, that could create more safety issues, walking and trying to walk in that tiny segment than anything else then would help. That's all I have for you. If you have any questions. The applicant is also attendance, so if, he might be happy to answer some questions for you.
Any questions?
I only have, I have two questions with respect to how the code works. My understanding from Ms. Frank said the other day that cost actually isn't a consideration that would be taken into this because it's a priority one. Is that right? So we can't really waive this on behalf of the fact that cost too much like utilities. This is like, cause it's a priority one, the cost is irrelevant. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't think the cost features in the.
Yeah. I think what Glenn was trying to get at is that for the utilities, there's very specific language that talks about reasonable, being reasonably practical.
Right. And this one doesn't have that correct.
That's correct.
Reasonably practical cost is irrelevant. The cost is irrelevant. Right?
Right.
And the second was the aggregation, or I'm sorry, the percentage difference in the house. Is it aggregate change over all of time? Is it just this one? If they said, okay, we're going to change it so it's 49% of the footprint, does that mean that, that does not trigger the sidewalk?
That is correct. So at this point, the area is also 50%, area of the addition is over 50% of the existing building area. And the cost, estimated cost is also over 50%. If either of those are met, if either of those are over that 50%, then full site compliance is triggered. They both need to be below 50% for the zone, for zoning code to look only at the expansion proposed. If that's making sense.
Yes, it is. So it's over 50% of the actual taxable value of the structure?
It is over 50% of the assessed value of the structure, yes.
Yes. And also if they go over 50% of the square footage, that's also a trigger as well.
So if they, if they go 49% now, no trigger. And, and under 49% now. And what if they go another 25% next?
It's not cumulative for this.
Gotcha. Okay. So you could theoretically build it in stages and trigger the sidewalk.
There are, in our landscaping standards, there are some cumulative calculations that can trigger a site plan. But specific to houses and this particular request, it really is just the magnitude of any, any, any one point in time. Are we at 50% square footage or a value?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, is the applicant here to present? Please come forward, state your name and address and sign in. And you have 10 minutes.
My name is Dwayne Hill. I live at 710 Maxwellton Drive, Des Moines, Iowa, 50315. Madam Chairman, planning the zoning commission and members of the city. I'm not sure what y'all do for the city. It's my first time ever being at something like this. As you can see, I have probably the largest lot on Maxwellton Drive. The house is kind of, it's been kind of small. I won't get into, you know, the, the addition. My wife and I have been planning. We're ready to move forward. We got the contractor. They did all the permits. We thought we were ready to have a beautiful addition to our house. Then we ran into some snags that made us start thinking, maybe we shouldn't even do anything to the house. One of the issues I'm up against right now is we've given the remodeling company, they went ahead and bought materials getting ready. So we spent a lot of money and they bought a lot of materials because they wanted, when they started building the house, they didn't want to get to certain stages of the bill, the addition and not have the materials they needed. And so we appreciated them for doing that. But now we're finding out that I guess toward the end of 2019, the rules changed as we were going into the pandemic. We didn't know anything about it. And it seems like that the, the remodeling company didn't know anything about it. So as these remodeling companies are getting to do these projects, when they get a large project, they're kind of running into these snags. And we're like, well, that's not our fault. We didn't know about it. You know, we, we really thought we had something special. It is something special. It's going to really beautify the neighborhood, make it look better. But we're against putting in the sidewalk. There's no sidewalks on the street. And this evening coming home, I just happened to look up coming toward Southwest 9th and I looked on the right, there's a signage that's posted that says no sidewalks that's, that's been put up by the, by the city. Well, who, I don't know. I'm gonna say the city put it up there cause it's on a light pole. So I'm assuming it was legal to put it up there. I'm not saying a homeowner put it up there. So that's kind of the problem now. I was told that there was cards sent around. I got the, the map thing telling me where to come, but I didn't have a card. My neighbors that I've talked to didn't get a card. So I'm like, the neighbors I've talked to, they don't want the sidewalk. And my, my wife and I, we're against putting in the sidewalk. At this point, I, the contractors are on hold. They're telling me that we'll probably lose all our money because we paid for the project, but we're not going to put in a sidewalk. I am not, we, we don't want to put in a sidewalk and we're, we're together on that. We don't want to be the only one on the street with a sidewalk. I can envision some kid deciding to jump on a skateboard and hit that sidewalk and then fall. And then is that my problem? Yes. I have to clean it. If the sidewalk starts changing or something, I have to maintain it. Someone's walking. I just, I just don't see anything good. And rather than filling a gap, I understand the city was wanting to fill gaps of sidewalks. Now I'm going to create a big gap along Southwest 9th. I see, I'm the fifth house on the right coming from Southwest 9th. I just don't feel like I'm so close to Southwest 9th that it justifies me being the only one on that street that has to put in a sidewalk. And I'm just against it. I'm hoping the committee will allow me and my family, I mean, to go ahead and do the remodel that we've been dreaming about and without putting in a sidewalk. If, if not, then that's just a part of the Southwest 9th that we might have to just look at other options because we, yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. Do you have any questions from commissioners? No, then thank you very much.
Can I ask one real quick?
Oh, go ahead, Chris.
How many houses would need sidewalks before you're not opposed to sidewalks?
It would have to be everybody on my side of the street or on the other, on the, well, I don't, it wouldn't make sense to have sidewalks on, me don't be the only one on my side of the street. So it'd have to be every house on my side of the street, all the way along that corridor. Cause there's no sidewalks behind my house on the, the next street. There's no, several blocks around, there's no sidewalks. So it would have to be everybody on Maxwellton Drive from Southwest 9th all the way up to Fifth Street or whatever the next street is to put in a sidewalk for, to make sense to me. And then I mentioned something that when I was talking to the lady, I said, is this something called, I don't know, eminent domain or something? She said, no, nothing like that. I said, well, what's going on? Why am I the only one that would have to just because of the remodel? My furnace went out. That cost me $18,000, you know, but they said the furnace doesn't count toward this. So it takes a lot to maintain a house. And then for me to see my dream, for me to lose my dream, my building, my house, my nice piece of property, it just, I just don't think it's fair.
How much is this sidewalk estimated to cost?
The city said, the engineers said it was $8,200. Not that it matters. And then the contractor that I have said it's about $3,200. So there's a big difference in what the city wants. I was like, wow. It just doesn't matter. Yeah. I'm just, I don't understand.
If he puts it in for the $3,200 quote, is the city okay with that or how?
Yeah. I believe the $8,200 is a quote that includes current cost, but also interest if it was a payment into escrow. So it's a, to account for the inflation. So I, it's not a, the $8,200, new, nod your head if I'm correct, that the $8,200 is not a current, to build it today cost. It's a, okay.
It's including 3% inflation if it costs you 10 years later, 80% if it takes years to build.
Sure.
That is what it was.
Yeah.
But if he decides to do it instead of today, it would definitely cost him much.
But, but even at $3,200, we don't want to be the only one on the street with a sidewalk.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak in support of this application? Please come forward, state your name and address and sign in, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Moore Hill. I'm Dwayne Hill's wife. Three years ago, me and Dwayne got married. He had this cute little house. I had two children. We ended up getting six other children because my daughter died. The two-bedroom house that he had would not be sufficient for us. He's been in this house for years. I had my own home. I moved into his and he accepted me and my children. And I think it's just unfair, and I worked for the city for 33 years. I think it's unfair that on the next street over, our street, the street behind us, nobody has sidewalks. And he did this for his family. He accepted me and my eight children that I have and to expand that house. I'm not asked, I don't want him to move and I don't want him to have to make big changes because of a sidewalk. If we have to do it in piecemeal, then that's what we'll do. But like I told him, I've worked for the city for 33 years. And I, I still think it's unfair that we had have to, we would be the only one with the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in support of the application? If not, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition? Okay. And are there any further questions for city staff? Not, then we will.
Go ahead. Oh, Dory, I just wanted to ask, I mean, it's, it appears to be true that for the locks, it doesn't appear that there are any sidewalks. Is that correct, sir? Yeah.
That's correct. There's, I don't believe there's a sidewalk from Southwest 9th down to, what is it? What, the next street to the?
So it's fifth, I want to say Southwest 5th. But you're correct. I drove down there earlier this week and there really are no sidewalks going east of the property almost until you hit South Union.
Okay.
And I'm talking about just the east and northeast. I haven't looked at the south, but you're correct.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no further questions. We'll close the public hearing and have commissioners further discussion? Emily?
I'd like to waive it. Is anyone else feeling the same?
I would like to waive it. It does not seem appropriate for that neighborhood in any fashion.
Yeah.
I guess my only question here is the city went through this process, I don't know, was it a year ago or two years ago? I've sort of lost track of time of making it so that we don't have to waive as many sidewalks. And this was what they came up with, was the priority one sidewalks of creating an escrow option. And I do have a fear that by waiving it, we're again, sort of shaking your head down there. So maybe I'm wrong. Are we, by waiving it, are we setting a precedent and saying again, like, yeah, it's still not the right thing to do? Like, I, I don't, I guess I'm not sure on.
I, I would. I, I would ask, and I'm sorry to interject, but if somebody does make a motion on this that is to waive it, I, I do think you need to put some stuff in the record that talks to what's unique about the circumstance. Because I, I think you're correct with, if it's not, if there's not uniqueness, then where do you stop?
Well, I guess I come back to trying to understand why it's a priority one sidewalk. Like, what, is it because it's proximity to Southwest Ninth? Is it because of how far it is from South Union Elementary? I'm just trying to understand, uh, what classified, how is it classified as a priority one sidewalk by the city?
Anu, do you happen to know what, in your conversations with traffic and transportation, um, what's led this to be a priority one route?
It looks like it might also be...
Can you come up to the, so we, everyone can hear you, come up to the microphone?
Uh, it's definitely come down from the transportation plan, but I think it might also be a planned DSM node that might have been, that might have played part in to identify it as a priority one street.
All right, let me, I can look at that.
And I guess my other question with priority one sidewalks is that within a certain timeframe that the city intends on, does that conform at all to the timeline that the city has for putting in sidewalks?
The, what we've discussed with the escrow agreement is about a ten-year window. We did check, right now thi- this area isn't in a, isn't programmed for the next couple of years. We, I, we don't know beyond that if it'll be programmed. Some of the concept that we had in discussing this and developing this plan, though, was that if we had a block that had multiple escrows sitting there, that that might direct us to go to a particular place sooner than, than other, elsewhere. I don't know if that, does that help answer the question?
Yeah, just a further question beyond that, though. If and when the city goes into a neighborhood to do the sidewalks, for the properties that don't have escrows, are, are the sidewalks then paid for by the city completely? Or is there some other way that those costs are recouped by the homeowners themselves?
Um, I'm not aware that we've done assessments. I'm, I'd have to look into that to see if we're mixing that in. I do believe the city sidewalk program in general right now is a city-funded CIP item.
Right.
Is, is there an option to defer until it's programmed? I guess my, my concern is in this neighborhood, again, this isn't even a through road in an area where there's zero sidewalks. Now, I'm not gonna be anti-sidewalk. I mean, obviously, the other draper in Windsor Heights gets to take care of sidewalks all day. But the, in this one here, though, I guess I, I do echo the question of how is, is this a priority one? Or why it's a priority one? And if it does get programmed, fine. I mean, would it, would it be something if we defer it for five years? We'll know whether or not it's programmed, or, and then at that point, this would then come back up? Or how does that work?
Um, yeah, I mean, the commission certainly could defer it. I don't know, um...
If I can chime in, Jason.
Sure, go ahead.
I did, uh, I did reach out to the Traffic and Transportation Department at the city. Uh, as Jason mentioned, this is not programmed in, even though it is identified as a priority one street. And, um, I'm sorry, I'm not, I do not have the criteria that they use, but I'm pretty certain the proximity to Southwest Ninth plays into it, uh, as well as the school out there. But based on my discussion with Traffic and Transportation, they do not have this in their plan for sidewalk construction in the next few years. Whether it comes up in the next ten years, it's hard to say at this point.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll take a vote.
I, I'm sorry, what was the motion?
To waive.
Okay, and who made that one?
Uh, Emily.
Emily, okay.
It was an eloquent motion.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. And Greg, how do you vote?
Can you restate the motion, please?
It was, uh, the motion was to waive the requirement for a sidewalk, public sidewalk there.
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. So the motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Eight, three. So item number eight is a request from Corey Wilson for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property located at four thousand East Thirty-Eighth Street and for a type-two design alternative to allow construction of a two-thousand-three-hundred-and-four-square-foot, twenty-two-foot-tall metal-clad accessory building within the rear yard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Suresh Chakrabarti with the Planning Department. The item before you is a review and approval of a type-two design alternative for a property on, located on four thousand East Thirty-Eighth Street. The applicant is seeking to construct a two-thousand-three-hundred-and-four-square-foot, twenty-two-foot-tall metal-clad accessory building within the rear, rear yard of the property. Here's a map. The subject property is located in a predominantly low-density residential neighborhood. The existing zoning is N2B neighborhood district. The existing land use is low-density residential. As you can see, the adjacent land use and zoning is, again, predominantly low-density residential on the north, south, and east side. To the west is a...
If I could, I think you have, uh, we're on item eight, right? I, I think you...
Oops.
Yeah, fry is nine. There we go.
I'm sorry.
They're very similar requests.
I'm sorry, yes, you're right.
I mean, I, I'd love to go home, you know, too.
I apologize. I apologize. I wasn't looking at the screen at all.
No worries.
Um, so I'll, I'll just, uh, I'll start again. This is a type-two design alternative for a property on four thousand East Thirty-Eighth Street. And the applicant is seeking to construct a two-thousand-three-hundred-and-four-square-foot, twenty-two-feet-foot-tall metal-clad accessory building within the, um, within the rear yard. And this time, we have the correct map here. So, um, the, um, the adjacent land use and zoning is low-density residential. On the, on the north, the east, and the south sides, there's a floodway. On, on the west side, it is predominantly low-density residential. The applicant is proposing to add an accessory structure on the rear, uh, yard of the property. It's about two-thousand-three-hundred-and-four square foot, as I mentioned, twenty-two foot tall. I have some, um, plans here. I'll come back to the pictures here in a second. I'll show the plans first. So here's the primary structure. The applicant is proposing to add the accessory structure. There's, uh, let's see, another plan. Uh, you can see better here, the north property lie in the south. So the property is fairly deep. And, uh, and the, the accessory structure will be set back. There's a little bit of a drop in, as well, so it's not very visible from, from the street. And I'll show you here in the pictures. Here's the property in question. The, from, a view from the front. There's a, there's a privacy fence as well. And here's a, a street view, just showing generally the character of the, of the neighborhood. And here's some elevations as well, which can kind of show you the scale of the accessory structure in comparison to the primary structure. This is, uh, looking from the north. This is looking from the south. Here's some more elevations from the various sites. Staff reviewed this, and we determined that the scale of the accessory structure along with the exterior materials of the structures, uh, structure as proposed do not match the character of the, of the principal dwelling. Staff has determined that the type-two design alternative request to have metal siding and metal roof does not really match the existing exterior materials of the principal, um, principal dwelling unit, which, um, we had some of the pictures here. You can kind of see what it looks like here. So, um, per section one thirty-five dash two-point-two, two-point-one D seven of the city code, materials of accessory structures shall match those of the principal structure when the accessory structure is greater than three hundred square feet, which in this case it is. Staff believes that since the property is also located in a residential area, that the garage should have a residential scale and that the character matches the house. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of the requested type-two design alternative to allow, um, the detached garage with metal siding and metal roofing material that does not match the existing exterior material of the principal dwelling unit. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them at this time.
Did you get any feedback from surrounding neighbors on this?
Yes, um, we, uh, the applicant shared with, with us some emails of support from the adjacent property owners. And I believe the applicant is here, and he's going to go a little bit more into detail regarding the feedback from the adjacent neighbors. But they were all in support of the project, and they thought that this would not disrupt the character of the neighborhood in any sense. We did not receive any, um, any comments in opposition to the project as well.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Would the applicant please come forward? State your name and address and sign in, please. You have ten minutes.
Good evening. My name is Will Reasoner. I'm with the Dickinson Firm, and I'm Mr. Wilson's attorney, uh, six-nine-nine Walnut Street, Suite sixteen-hundred in Des Moines, five oh three oh nine.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission members. Corey Wilson, four thousand East Thirty-Eighth Street, Des Moines, Iowa.
You can stay there. Uh, Corey, just go ahead and say your name and what you do for a living generally, just briefly.
Uh, Corey Wilson. I'm a mechanical engineer.
Okay. And Corey, uh, is this your property?
Yes.
All right. Let's zoom out a little bit. Can you describe generally the character of the neighborhood?
The, the character of the neighborhood are large acreages, um, ranging from two acres up to approximately six on the northeast corner of Des Moines near the city limits.
So, uh, on the screen, it looks like in blue, is that your parcel?
Yes.
So up north, is that generally agriculture area up there?
There is an agricultural lot approximately four tenths of a mile north of there.
Okay. So we've got really large lots. It looks like there's a lot of tree cover?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's talk a little bit about the building that you're planning on using. First of all, what are you planning to use this building for?
So I have an extension, extensive, uh, classic car collection. Um, it'll house, you know, act primarily as a garage to, to store my car collection. Strictly private use, no commercial intent. It's, it's vehicles that I already own and just trying to house them all in one location. So I, I selected the, the material because of the, the size and the scale of the building. I feel it's gonna give a more aesthetic appeal. It also matches other buildings, uh, in the neighborhood that are metal-clad with, um, metal siding, metal roof.
Yeah, so you're, is this your house?
Yes.
Over here on the left? Looks like you've got gray siding with white trim. And then the, the plan for the building is to match that?
Uh, it'll be gray with charcoal trim. The, the two white doors shown will actually be, be charcoal is the intent to, to match the two side doors.
So other than the type of material, is it fair to say that the, the color and how this is going to look trim-wise, that it is actually going to match your residence?
Yes, that was my primary intent, was to, to try to match to the primary house.
Okay. Uh, let's talk a little bit about elevation for where this proposed building's going to be. So at the top picture, and then to the right, uh, is that the proposed structure?
Yes.
Okay. So even though this structure's twenty-two feet high, you're still quite a bit below the peak of your primary structure?
That's correct.
Okay. And I can try and zoom in here, but I believe that the difference in height, this is twenty-two, twenty-two feet at the peak of the proposed structure. That's thirty-six. So we've got a difference here of at least fourteen feet or so? Is that about accurate?
Yep.
And then, is this the front of your property?
That's correct. The house sits crossways to the street. It doesn't sit, uh, uh, you know, facing the street like most, most houses.
So does your front yard kind of go up before it dips back down?
It does.
Okay.
There's a couple of feet elevation rise off of, uh, between East Thirty-Eighth and, and my house, and then about a twelve-foot elevation drop from my house to the proposed building site.
So is it fair, do you see on the screen where my mouse is at?
Yes.
Is it fair to say that right around there is the only point of the building that's gonna be visible from the street?
Yes, it, it would be, the, the peak may very, barely be visible. You can see the neighbor's building next door is, is, uh, invisible.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get to that. So this is your neighborhood, and the parcels that are highlighted in yellow, do those parcels have a metal outbuilding with a metal roof?
Yes.
Okay. And then the green ones have an outbuilding that at least have a metal roof, but you're not sure about the siding?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we look, counsel, at, I'm gonna call it the four thousand to the forty-one hundred block. So right around here's the north end, down here's the south end. Corey, would you generally say that that's your neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay. And so if we count the parcel, your parcel, again, is four thousand?
Yes.
So if we exclude your parcel and we count the rest of these, are there fourteen parcels in that neighborhood?
Correct.
And seven of those parcels already have a metal structure?
Yes.
Okay. Do you think that your structure would be in line with what's in the neighborhood?
I, I do. I, I purchased the property in twenty-seventeen with the intent of, uh, building, you know, such a building. It wasn't until twenty-nineteen, uh, roughly, that I reached out to the building inspectors, had, had the funds to, to move forward the project and found out about the, the new planned DSM, ordinance that, that they said prohibited the, the exterior metal siding. So at that point, I started to reevaluate the project, look at some alternative methods. And then, um, as we all know, the, the COVID hit, and, um, the building material supply line was, was practically shut down. I was a construction engineer by trade at that time. And, uh, so just put the project on hold and let, let prices settle and, and calm down a little bit. And, and now I'm here, ready to, to move forward with the project.
Corey, this fenced area, is that your property?
Correct.
And so this existing structure is at your neighbor's?
Yes.
Okay, so this right, actually, there's already an existing metal structure?
Yep, and, and so I thought it would fit, you know, the, the characteristic of the property. I'm, I'm gonna build, you know, similar, the, the same exterior material, the same roofing material. Um, I will match, you know, the color to, to that in my house. But, um, overall, it's, I, I'll be, be building the, the same characteristic building.
Counsel, I just want to just reiterate, I can, I'll, I'll come back to that. Corey, did you reach out to your city council person about this, uh, structure?
Yes, I had Linda Westergaard, uh, on my property to, to review this, this, uh, proposed area.
And she did come and take a look?
Yes, she, she was on site and, um, you know, her, her email, I guess, will speak for itself. But we, we had a very good chat. She felt that it, it fit the neighborhood. Again, the neighborhood's very unique to Des Moines because of the acreages. It's, you know, the, the setback that I'll have for this building is, is greater than a lot of property dimension, lot dimensions within Des Moines, so...
So Linda Westergaard is in favor of this for, for however that factors into the council's decision, commission's decision. Have you received support from any other neighbors?
Yes, JB Conlin, who represents the Hilltop Apartment. I, I reached out to all the, the, the surrounding neighbors, you know, just because it, it is adjacent to them. So I wanted to, to discuss, you know, the plans. And, and JB provided an email to the, to city staff that he was in support of, of the building. To the east... To the east, 4,001, Roberta Travis, she provided a letter of support. She feels that it will actually benefit the property and fit the narrative and characteristic of the neighborhood.
And then, the property to the south, have you received support?
Rick Ramsey, he owns the duplex, it's a multifamily duplex to the south of me. He's also, you know, he spoke to the improvements I made to the building, or to the property, excuse me, since I purchased it, because it was, there were a lot of improvements that I've made to the exterior since I moved in, so.
So in sum, Commissioner, this structure, although it is large and it is metal, it does fit the character of the neighborhood. This is an area, although it's residential, these are extremely large lots for inside the city. Half of the parcels in the neighborhood do have a metal structure similar to this. Mr. Wilson's explained how he's going to match, although the material's going to be different, the color and the trim is going to match the residence. There's support from the city council, there's support from neighbors to the south, to the east, and to the north. There's this very similar structure. This is going to be hidden from the street. No trees are going to come down, so there's going to still be the same tree cover, and this is for personal use. There's going to be no detriment to the neighborhood, and this is not going to feel out of place all of the sudden. And I believe that there are other neighbors present in support. Are there any questions from the commission?
I just missed, I went to the restroom. Were there any cards in opposition, or was there any neighbors in opposition that you were aware of?
No.
Any other questions for the applicant?
You mentioned that this is to house an extensive classic car collection. What is the cost differential that would, for complying with the correct siding, correct type, relative to the cost of what's being housed? I mean, what's the order of magnitude of cost? Because, I mean, this is a pole barn, right?
That's correct.
So the option is either it's a pole barn, and we say, okay, you get to keep the metal roof, but we put on siding instead. What is that cost differential relative to what's in the building?
The cost differential to what's in the building, you know, estimated values would be, so I'd be looking at, just on materials alone, about a $20,000 upcharge to sheet and vinyl side, because the steel provides the structural support for the building, so I wouldn't have to sheet the side walls and the roof for asphalt shingles and vinyl siding. So $20,000 difference, the...
What's the full cost of this thing?
I'll have about $100,000 in by the time I'm done with the, going to be putting in in-floor heat, electrical. I'll be running, you know, service to the building and really making it a nice building.
So you're roughly 20%, differential, so it's a 20% cost overrun theoretically, assuming the pole barning is your base?
Just in materials alone, so I have spoken with city building inspectors, and because of the door size vice the wall size, I will have to, if I did a frame build, I would have to go some, to some added bracing for a narrow wall bracing that would drive some of the cost up, and then plus the labor to install the additional materials. So realistically, we had to put an estimate on it, maybe $30,000 in overage compared to the proposed construction methods.
Any other questions for the applicant? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in support of this applicant? Please come forward, state your name and address, sign in on the sheet, and you'll have five minutes.
Sorry, is my five minutes up? Okay. My name is Dan Berardi, and I live at 3927 East 38th Street, which I'm right across the street from Corey. We do have some unique properties on that, East 38th Street. I do have, on my property, I do have an acre and a quarter, and I bought the house, what's the address of Dad's house?
3951.
3951, which is right across the street from Corey's place. I bought my house, my father-in-law here, probably four months ago. It has an acre and a half piece of property on it, and it has a relatively large-sized building on that. I couldn't tell you the square foot. But on my property itself, I do have a seven-and-a-half car garage that was previous, built by the previous owner. He did custom, old custom cars like Corey's going to do, but for what he is asking for, it would be a big improvement for the neighborhood, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm his wife. I'm power of attorney for my father, so just same thing. We're glad for it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak against the applicant? Okay. At this time, are there any questions for staff? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and it's time for deliberation with the commissioner.
Well, I think counsel's done a very good job of presenting the cost benefits of the waivers being requested, and I would support allowing for the waiver in this instance. I think it's an improvement in the neighborhood and also, but so many of the existing homeowners have the same standards, so I think it's be consistent. I would support the request from the applicant.
Any other discussion? Anyone wish to make a motion?
I make a motion to support the applicant's request for a waiver.
Okay, so the motion's been made to approve the Type 2 design alternative request. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. Greg, how do you vote?
I'm in support of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. We're ready for item number nine. Sarey Oshigun, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sarey Oshigun, with the planning staff. The item before you is a very similar item to the one that we just discussed before. This subject property is on 333 East McKinley Avenue, and again, the request is to allow construction of a 1,200-square-foot, 15.08-foot-tall, metal-clad accessory building within the rear yard of the property. So with that, let's take a look at the property here. So the, it's predominantly, the property is in a low-density residential neighborhood. Existing zoning is NX1 neighborhood district, and the adjacent land uses are all predominantly low-density residential as well. The property here is proposing to add an accessory structure in the rear yard. There's currently, as you can see in the aerial here, zoom in a little bit, there are some existing accessory structures. The applicant is proposing to add another one, and let's see, here's some pictures. You can see there's the primary structure, and then the accessory units that are in existence right now. These are just a few pictures of the street, showing the general character of the neighborhood in that area. This is a site plan. It kind of gives you an idea. Here's the house, the primary structure, and the proposed structure over here, the dimensions, and a few elevations as well. The north side of the wall on Building 1, the south side, Wall 21, Building 1. It's a floor plan. So again, staff has determined that the Type 2 design alternative request to allow the construction of this detached garage with metal siding and metal roof does not match the existing exterior materials of the principal building, and staff believes that this, again, since this property is located in a residential area, that the garage should have a residential scale and character that matches that of the house. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of the requested Type 2 design alternative, and we, I believe we did not receive any comments either in support or opposition to this particular request. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them at this time.
So on that, could you go back to the aerial view and point out where the new structure will be built?
So here's the plan that shows the proposed pole shed in relation to the
I think that's actually
the primary structure and...
I think the one, I think that's the, they're wanting to put the new one behind the existing one.
You just had the overhead photo.
Yeah, if you want to go to slide two?
There it is. That's the one.
So I believe they're proposing to put it behind the existing machine shed-type building. If you go back to that drawing, I think it said new shed.
And maybe when the applicant speaks?
Yeah.
We can...
Yes, it's going to be behind the existing shed.
Okay.
It's just lower than the house, right? It's really out of sight of everything.
Okay.
That's the existing shed.
Okay.
Just for clarifications, that's not to scale at all, right? So I mean, like, what is the square footage of all the accessory buildings relative to the house?
This, yeah, you're right. This plan is not to scale. The dimensions are here. The primary structure is about 2,014 square foot. The existing is, as you can see, 35, 30 by 60 feet is what the existing pole shed is, and the new one would be about 1,200 square foot.
So basically, it is two pole sheds, and they're both twice the size of the house, roughly, if I'm understanding this picture.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff?
Is there a rule with respect to the number or size of additional buildings relative to the primary structure, or is that not come into it, or how, I didn't see anything like that. Is that in here at all, like the same way we do with?
They can have a, the percentage is slipping my mind, but a certain percentage of the rear yard can be accessory structures. This is a fairly large lot, so I don't believe the area was an issue here of building area.
Yeah, the size of the site is about 1.16 acres.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying it's a square footage accessory structures as a function of the total square footage of a lot, not of the actual primary structure? Am I hearing that right?
Yeah.
Okay. There are no more questions? We'll hear from the applicant, and you have 10 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So go ahead. Mr. Frye, go ahead and introduce yourself and...
Okay, I'm Jim Frye. I live at 333 East McKinley, and I assumed everything was okay except for the metal clad. There are a number in that area. It's an acre and a quarter. As you can see, to the east is just kind of a ravine. It's out of sight. It's lower than the rest of the building there. It's going to be pretty much for recreation. We do have some anti-car suit, so.
Any questions for the applicant? And if that's, if that's your...
Yeah, that's all I got.
All righty, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Okay, before we close the public hearing, are there any questions for staff at this time? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and...
One last question. Is the presence of the pole barn there, did that factor into the assessment of whether or not this was appropriate? We already have a pole barn.
Yeah.
We have a second one. Does it matter?
We did have a long discussion on, actually, both of these items that are similar, the one before this and this one, and in this one in particular about, you know, it's, there's one that exists there today, and that this is going behind it. Does that mitigate that? And ultimately, we landed on recommending denial because it's, where do you stop and start, was what our struggle was with staff, and do you continue, do you reinforce that? You know, the, you know, the not being in keeping with the character that we're looking for, or does it not matter? So we landed on, you know, let's not expand it, so to speak, let's not add to it, but certainly, it was not a, you know, something that we went back and forth as staff on.
Are there no more questions?
I would also like to add that when we were reviewing this, the primary criteria that we were using was the material and the look of the structure in comparison to the primary dwelling on the property as well. That was the real quantifying criteria that we used to determine that it didn't meet the code.
But will it be the same materials of the existing?
It is not currently the way it is proposed.
But the existing pole shed that's there, is it the same?
Yeah, I think that those materials would be, and just to piggyback, I think that was an excellent point, that part of where we went as staff with direction is that the code is telling us, the criteria is based off the dwelling and not other accessory structures. But to clarify, I do believe the two would generally match, the new one and the, or the existing one and the proposed one.
So then, what we would do is we're asking them to have the house, and then there's three buildings that already match, and we're going to add a fourth one that's not going to? Is that kind of?
The large one that you see there, the on the east, the new one would be to the south of that, and those two would generally match. I don't believe that the two that are behind the house, I don't think those are pole buildings. Yeah. Okay, you can see the one appears to have laps, appears lap siding, and then...
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, what are your thoughts?
Well, here I go again. I just think when you have an acreage like this, it just creates an exception, even in an urban community. So I would allow, vote in favor or make a motion for the requested Type 2 design alternative to allow the garage with metal siding and metal roofing.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, if not, we have a motion on the floor. Okay, if not, we have a motion on the floor to recommend approval of the requested type two design alternative. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And all those opposed, raise your right hand. And Greg, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
Epstein.
And Chris is Epstein. So the motion passes and the wa, waiver is approved. Okay, we're on to our final agenda item, which is a request from Glad Tidings Assembly of God Church for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property located in the vicinity of 2145 East Army Post Road and for a type two design alternative to allow surface parking in a front yard and street side yard along primary frontages.
Thank you, Chair. Frank Dunn, Planning Staff. First, I'd like to build a little context for the site that's in question. As you can see in the image, this is a vacant, a large vacant lot, eight acres in size. Adjoining this property, and I'll move to the site sketch. Want to move to the next site sketch. And to kind of give some of, some lens of what's adjoining the property. Adjacent to the north is a convenience store. You can't see it in the image, but there is a, a convenience store to the north. And that property is zoned MX-1. To the west is a mobile home, sales office and vacant land. To the south and southeast is property that would be zoned N1A with residential on it. And then adjacent to the property to the east is a P1 zone property with a cemetery. As stated, the applicant is proposing an onsite surface parking lot in the front, front yard of the site. The planning and design ordinance requires onsite surface parking lots to be located in the rear yard or interior side yard of a, of a civic building in properties that are zoned P2. I'm going to move to the next slide. This shows the layout of the property. It's accessed off the drive to the north from East Army Post is the proposal along with another access off of Indianola Avenue. Staff is recommending that we would approve the parking on the Indianola Avenue street side as it sets back approximately 260 feet from, from the, the property line. Whereas along the north, staff is recommending denial. And the reason for that is this area is a community mixed node. It's, it's intended for a mix of densities and some pedestrian activity that would take place. Really, the civic building type is intended to push that parking to the rear or to the interior side yard. By having it closer to the, to the front of the lot, you're able to create more, more of a sense of presence with the pedestrian activity as opposed to having parking that would be more of an auto dominant type of a use. The Indianola side is softened by what is a detention basin, quite a bit of landscaping in then that setback that we have there. So the applicants have, have indicated that, you know, moving the parking to the rear and to the interior side yard is undesirable as they have an interest in future parking and future building expansion in that area. What questions do you have for me?
If, if I could, just before we go to the questions with staff, I, I just want to piggyback on to Frank's comment on Indianola Road and why we're supportive of that. There's the basin that's there, but there's also houses to the south. And you can't, I don't know if you can go to the aerial, maybe slide two. Okay, I thought, I thought we had the map at the beginning, but, um, Didn't we start with the map? Didn't we show the map yet, or did we not get to it?
The, the map's not there. I'm not finding the map.
Okay, we lost, we didn't get, okay.
There's, there's an aerial on forty-nine of the packet.
It's like there's
Sorry, I don't, I don't have that. Yeah.
Huh, okay.
The map's not there.
Well, we can, um, we can pull up an aerial if we need to. But for those of you that are familiar with this area, to the, go back to the site plan.
Yep.
Okay, so you can kind of see where that fence diagram is. Those are single-family losses. There are houses there. And so it kind of creates almost an outlaw situation or vibe. There's also a ten-foot trail that's going in through there. So that's why as staff, we were comfortable with waiving the, the parking requirement on that side. But it's the same, you know, Frank laid out our case for not supporting on the north. And, you know, we're not, we're not suggesting, you know, we would work with the applicant on best place to put the building. If you didn't have the parking there, I, I don't know. It's just a matter of leaving the driveway. I don't know that that really achieves what we're looking for. You know, you're really looking for that building to be scooted up a little bit and to engage the street in a different way, but.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Frank, and we'll hear from the applicant. Please state your name and address, and you have ten minutes.
Thank you. I'm Rick Baumhofer, excuse me, with Bishop Engineering, 3501 104th Street in Urbandale, representing Glad Tidings Church. With me tonight is also Jeff Rains, the project, project architect, and Pastor Bill Whitting will speak after me as well. We feel that our request is in keeping with the general neighbor, area, general feel of the, of the neighborhood and would not do any damage to the character of the neighborhood. And there's a number of mitigating factors that I'm going to point out to, to support that. I think I'd like to start, though, with a little bit of the history. The staff reports that there was no planning history to this project, however, not before the planning and zoning board, however, in twenty, I don't know if this
Yeah, we can
This is on. So a little bit of the history is back in 2013, the church bought this, acquired this property, wanting to expand from their current location. And so they came forward with the city with a complete site plan to construct I'm just going to briefly show what their layout was. So 2013, they came forward with a plan, this is an eight-acre parcel, came forward with a plan for a large building and, and project here. And as you can see, they, at that time, anticipated having two rows of, two bays, a double rows of parking near the north part of the project near Army Post Road with the entrance in off of Indianola Avenue. The Indianola Avenue entrance really kind of feels like a flag lot, if you will, because there is a residential house to the south of that driveway. To the north is, is the side of their detention basin. So the east side of the property is well screened with separate lots that had previously been, been subdivided there. So the main entrance is coming off of southeast Army Post Road. The intent was to have the main entrance to the church at the front of the building and have a drop-off area there as well to greet people. And that was the, that was the plan, a quite a large plan. Also, at that time, they did come before the zoning board of adjustment. Went the other way. In July of 2013, they had to come before the zoning board of adjustment for two things. One, to allow a 25-foot height variance on the height of the church steeple. And secondly, to request that they would be allowed to put the parking within fifteen feet of the 30-foot parking, normally, otherwise 30-foot parking setback along the north side of the property. So at that time, this site plan was approved and construction began and the grading of the site was done. The detention pond was built, but that's all as far as the church at that time had funds in order to do. And Pastor Bill explained a little bit about the timing and the unique nature of fundraising and constructing a project at this size and magnitude over time. Well, since that time, since 2013, in 2019, the zoning regulations changed. And also, since they did not complete the project, the, the site plan approval, I think it's a two-year timeframe elapsed. So coming back now, to pick the project up, you have to start over again with the site plan process. And then you're, is why we're here this evening. So that, a little bit about the history of the project, what they originally had sites and hopes to do. We think that their current plan, as was shown earlier, they have, the church acknowledges that. They've reduced the, they meet the landscaping standards in the sense of they have eight spaces and then a landscape island. Push that up here. They're fully, they want to fully comply with the landscaping that's required along the buffer, provide the fence buffer along the north side of the property. And in fact, they've taken out two rows of their parking and reduced it down to just one lane, one lane with two row, double, double park. That's the most economical way to build parking. You're building the driveway, you might as well put parking on that driveway. Just to have a single driveway with no parking on there is not very economical. And also with this plan, they've stepped away from having 15-foot setback of parking to the lot line. They can pull back to 30 feet, and so that required for that, the variance that was granted to board of adjustment, they're no longer needing to use that to actually feel like they've tried to be in, be in spirit with what the city is trying to do here by creating more space and, and buffering of the parking lot. So instead of being 15 feet from the lot line, we're now 30 feet back from the lot line. Instead of having four rows of parking, now we're down to two rows of parking. Something else I want to speak to a little bit too is here is a, a little shine to it, which could zoom up a little bit more. Is that we feel that this is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. As you can see, the property to the west is a mobile home sales facility. And they have a parking lot with trailers in front for sale that's in their front yard. That sits over here. So they have parking and a lot in their front yard. Casey's is, is developed across the way in the northwest corner of the intersection. And they have their driveway and their pumps and their parking is in the front yard of their, in front of their building. We think it's going to be very difficult for this neighborhood, for this node to really develop and fully reach a, you know, a neighborhood pedestrian friendly type feel to it, just because of the existing conditions as well as the topography of the area. We have, in addition to Casey's, which is already well established, across the street is a home world cemetery. So there's unlikely to be any development of any pedestrian use in that area. We have our detention basin in the southwest quadrant. And in the northeast quadrant, the only area left to build is zoned MX-1. For zoning, however, there's a large drainage area that's with a large box cover that leaves property over here. But that's, it'd be very difficult for that area to really fully develop, is what a two neighborhood node, I think, is envisioned. So we feel that the likelihood of anything more developing here, other than if our one building was up to the street frontage, we think it's very unlikely there'd be another neighboring building in the area to also be like that. So I think that's, that's really kind of too many points. One is that we've been here before. We've modified our plans down to try to help with the spirit of the intent of the ordinance, which is to, to screen the parking. We're providing the street trees, the, the landscape trees. We're even providing the metal fence that's really quite removed from, from the street view. But they, so they'd go ahead and provide that metal fence if they could keep some parking in the front, which really makes sense. The front door of the church is inviting, is the face of the building. You're going to have a driveway there anyways to put parking on both sides of the driveway. Again, just makes sense that you don't have an empty driveway. We feel that that makes sense. And the other properties in the neighborhood also have parking in the front. So we feel that we have a strong case for, for this waiver request. And with that, I know Pastor Bill, would you like to speak a little bit about some of, about the unique nature, the timing of the project, where we did have the project was approved? And we're back to, kind of back to starting over now.
Thank you for giving us a chance to share and, and we want, we, we currently are 314 East Army Post Road. And we purchased this property was just kind of a, a God thing. He sold it to us for a couple hundred thousand dollars and financed it, and so we were moving ahead. And then finances and different things happen. And as a pastor, my goal is that we not be, that I not leave them so in debt they can't afford to go to Burger King. So that's what slowed us down just a little bit, and then you had Corona and those things. But part of the reason, the, the plan there is you have the drive-through drop-off area right there. That's going to be that front. We want to present a, a, just a sharp, beautiful front to the community as they're, that whole section, that as they go by, they're like, there's a, there's a sharp building. There's a beautiful place. And so there's that. The second thing is we have a lot of seniors in our church. And so for them to have to park clear around the back, maybe he would drop his wife out, but then you got older gentlemen having to walk in the winter and the stuff. And to be able to have them as close as possible, we have adapted smaller because we want to be in tune with you guys and, and to, to work within the, the scope of what you have there. The other issue is, and you can't see the, the building plan, but the sanctuary runs this way. And the expansion would be to the west. So if you have parking back there, you have to redo stuff or you have to put your parking so far away. The other part on the south end is the educational, and the expansion would come to the south. So once again, if you put all your parking there, then you have to redo everything. And so in that connection, that's, to be able to have that, to do that, we, we're going to do our best to make it a sharp place on the south side that will help to lift, you know, we want to, we want to do it well and right. There's a church, if you just go up the street on the left-hand side, a white church up there by the fire department, you know, and they've done a good job. We want to be like that. We want to be a community asset. And also, we really would like to use some of the back area for, it's, it's all, all the dirt work's done, all that stuff's done. We're ready. If somebody would like to buy a church on 314 East Army Post, a half If somebody would like to buy a church on 314 East Army Post, a half a block, we'd make you a great deal. And we're trying to shorten the window from the sale of our property, the building process. So what, we want to come in and put the drives in and we want to put a, a pavilion area where we can keep the mowers and stuff and get some of that stuff done. We're trying to get as much done so that when somebody comes along to buy our building, we can have that short window of, in, in there. But to have the back where there could be youth events and different things, a kid soccer area, because that is a big area for, there's a whole lot of mobile home courts in that neighborhood. And so I think it's good to have churches there to help, help families and to help people. And that's really what we're about. And to have some community things that where we're at currently, we have a basketball hoop and a cement pad there. And we're the only basketball hoop on the south side with a net. And that's what the boys tell me, they're like, well, you like to play at yours. It's one of those adjustable, nice goal setters and you've got a net. And so we want to be an asset to the city. We want to bless the city. And so I, I just appreciate you guys' time and consideration of what we'd like to do here. So, thank you. Any questions?
So how much concrete work has been done? You mentioned that there's concrete work done, apparently, if there's a basketball net?
That's at our old place.
Oh, okay.
That's at our old place. But, and it's interesting because we, we got the goal setter hoop, so we can take it. But the, the cement work we'd like to do is the drives, the approaches from Army Post and Indianola, and then also to put a, a pavilion type building there. And we'd really love to get the water run in. We're trying to get everything we can done, you know, just keep doing things along the way and paying for them as they go. Right, process.
As the money's coming in.
Yes, as the process goes. So we really wanted to do all that this summer, but the plans got lost. And so that's why we're clear here as late as we are. And so spring, we'd love to be able to get some of that stuff. We, we do activities and events out on the land now and for us to make that transition, so.
Currently, nothing has been done that would prevent a change to this plan. Is that right? You aren't having, if, if plan changed, I mean, I, I agree very strongly with Frank, especially with the church, that presence and location is important.
Right.
If you're going to be a community item.
Right.
And this is not a suburb, right? So if we're in the city and we have a strong presence and location, it seems like, I'm probably more, more in favor than staff of not even the parking on Indianola Road either. But right now, you aren't tearing anything out to move this building up into the, to the north and to the east, are you?
No.
So no, no, there's no sunk cost we'd be losing if this position changes?
No, 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 Mr. Draper, but the, we're trying to look down the road. So if, if you put the parking on the backside, when you expand, you got to tear it all out again. And then also, you're making, so if you have your fronts there facing the corner, you got older people who are having to walk from the back. And then you also create, so the entrances are going to be from the front and from the east side there. So now you have people coming from the back and you have a greater security issues because people are coming indoors that are not where you want them to come in. You want to, you want to, in today's society, you want contained entrance. Now, all the doors are openable, you know, you push the painting bars and they open. But you just have a lot of stuff going on and so that's, you know, and.
So like the travel that gets into the parking is in back, everybody that parks in the main lot to the back has to walk clear up to the front door. And that's what you're saying with the elderly folks, that everybody, yes, we're in the city, but this is really still a suburban feel where people are still going to expect to park next, close to the door. And we're not asking for a ton of parking in front. Most of the parking expansion as it expands will continue south along the east side of the building and then wrap around. So really, we're only talking about these two rows of parking on the north side of the building, which we would have a driveway there anyways to get to the front door. We're just asking to allow there to be parking on both sides of that driveway, which economically makes sense that you load your driveways with parking on both sides. And it does provide some, and it provides parking close to the door, which is what the congregation really wants. Everybody wants that parking spot closest, closest to the door.
And just the drive, the drive flow, as you're coming in and going through there and then you're able to, to park there and do those things. And so that would.
But that flow could change, is the point right now. There's no sunk cost, there's nothing that couldn't change that, right?
Well, which we'd really like to have in front of our church like it is facing the corner. That, because that gives it the presence, you know, with the steeple and all that stuff, to have that presence toward that corner. And so in, in the long term, Mr. Draper, it would cost more money because we'd have to do things a couple times. You, you do them and then you got to tear them back out if you go to expand. And so those, the other thing that he didn't mention actually was too, was if you put the parking to the west, now you have, all the flow goes east. So now you have the drainage issues of having to go around the building and, and all of those issues that, that, that you now incorporate. So it, it just, we, I mean, we spent a lot of time, we looked at basements, we looked at a lot of things. We went through a lot of parameters to get this kind of idea of how we could most effectively minister to our people and our congregation with their age and with the different stuff. And so, but thank you. Any other questions or?
Okay, any, no other questions from the commission? Okay, anybody else here to speak in support of the application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition?
I'll speak in, in support as a point of clarification. Jeff Rains, architect. So I think what Pastor was trying to get at is that, that, that drop-off and steeple feature, they want to, they want that to face the community, face the intersection. And they feel like if, if that's flip-flopped and everything, and the parking and the main entrance is put in the back, it's downhill, it's below the level of the street and not as visible. And they feel like they're turning their back on the neighborhood doing that. That's, that's sort of the, the, the design feature that you were speaking toward, against. But the other thing that wasn't mentioned is that, just from a visibility standpoint, from East Army Post to the level where this parking is, it's elevated. So I just don't, I just don't think you're going to be able to see much of that parking anyway with the landscaping and the elevation change. So that's all I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in support of the app? And no one, oh, did you want to speak? Okay. Come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes. And then sign in, please.
Lyle Taylor. I'm a member of Glad Tidings, 314 East Army Post Road. One thing that this is, this isn't a commercial business that's going to have cars every single day. Sundays and Wednesdays are, are busy times. So it, it's not like if the parking is up front, we're going to have cars every single day full, with a full parking lot. Sunday, Wednesdays, like I said. And as Jeff said, Rains with the architect, this is an elevated property. The way that the Army Post Road goes downhill, we are elevated up. And right now, as you drive without anything on the lot, you really can't see what's up on top. So that's all I have.
Okay, okay, thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, if not, any further questions for staff?
Hello, Dory, this is Greg.
Okay, Greg.
Can I ask a question to staff? Yeah, my question for staff is, my understanding of the zoning ordinance is that front door must face a primary street and parking in the front is prohibited. Are both those statements correct?
Yes, that is correct, that the, the, there should be a front door facing the street and then parking should be in the so, interior side or rear.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, because I, I do think the church is the type of building that there, there's a large quantity of folks that get dropped off or need to get to the front door quickly, you could do it, since you guys are amenable as staff to parking on, what, the east side of the building? Is that right? If the front door faced the east, then possibly those two things could happen, right? It just could not happen currently in your mind to the north.
I'm not sure I heard everything that you said, Greg, but I, yes, you, you could orient the building so it has a door facing the east and then, you know, staff was supportive of the parking to the east of the building. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. It, it is an option for them to not turn their back in on the street or the community and still have drop-off.
Yeah.
My understanding is correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There's nothing that, there's nothing that would prevent a drop-off if there's parking, if there's not parking there. It's not like all of a sudden you have to move the steeple, number one. Number two, it isn't that there's only one door allowed in a building. It's that the front primary door must be facing the, the main street. And to Frank's point, it should be present and invisible because it's a church. This isn't a big box store. If it's Best Buy, you know, whatever, right? But this is, this isn't Best Buy, right? It should, it should be on the street and present, is, is how we've been looking at it. I don't know why we would make it different here.
Any other discussion or? Anybody care to make a motion at this point?
I would move staff.
Any further discussion of the motion on the floor? Okay, all those in favor of staff, please raise your right hand. And Greg, how do you vote?
Yes, I'm in favor of staff.
Okay. And any opposition? Did we? Okay, the motion, 8-3. Motion passes 8-3. Okay, so we're done with the items on the agenda. We did have one item to talk about, that's the nominations committee. We'd asked for three volunteers for this committee and that gives time to speak to people, to be chair, first chair. And, and the vote on that will be at the first meeting in January, which will be January 20th of 2022. Anybody? Okay. Anybody else willing to volunteer? I know.
Well, some of it's because, because of COVID, we were a little bit behind. I think last year you started in January and maybe we voted in February. Yeah, and so we, the bylaws do, you know, we are supposed to vote at the first meeting in January. So we're trying to, you know, do it properly. And, and in speaking with Dory, we wanted to make sure that you, the, the group has adequate time. So this would give you a couple months really to, to talk to folks and to meet.
Chris? Anybody else? Oh, you did volunteer too.
Okay.
Okay, great, we have three people, wonderful.
Chris, Emily.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Carolyn, and Carolyn.
Chris, Carolyn, and Emily.
Excellent, thank you. And I, that's, that's all, I, I didn't have anything else to add to that, so I think we can adjourn.
So meeting's adjourned.